Great.
Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting, regular meeting of June 9, 2022. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Ashley.
Here.
Commissioner Judge.
Here.
Commissioner McGiffney.
Here.
Commissioner Skidmore.
Here.
Commissioner Sprague.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item B, Commission member announcements or reports. On their own initiative, commission members may make an announcement report on their own activities. They may ask a question for clarification, make referral to staff, or take action to have staff place a matter of business on a future agenda. Do any of the commission members have an announcement? Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just did want to announce, for your commission's benefit, is there's a scheduling conflict with key members of our staff regarding the July 28 meeting. Therefore, we will actually not be having a meeting on July 28. That meeting will be canceled. So I just wanted to let your commissioners have that understanding well in advance, that there will be no meeting on July 28.
And thank you for the heads up, Mr. Murphy. We appreciate it. Approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion for the approval of minutes dated May 12, 2022.
I'll second.
Voice vote, please.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is approved. And minutes are approved. Item D, cases withdrawn for request for continuance. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. So we have two items that we are recommending a continuance today. The first is zone change case number nine, map 58, act preserve number 14, map 58 exclusion, and then modification number two, map number 58, and then tentative parcel map number one, two, four, three, six. The applicant is Daniel Rudnick by LAV Pinnacle Engineering. Staff is recommending that item be continued until June 23, 2022. The second item that we are recommending a continuance for is case number six. This is the Kern County Housing Element Implementation 2022. The Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department is the applicant for this particular project. This is a project that consists of a number of changes in land use designation to rezone and redesignate land to higher density uses. Staff is recommending that item be continued to June 23, 2022 as well. I would note for your commission that I do believe that there are a number of members of audience, members in the audience that were here for that project specifically. While the item is on your agenda, I do not recommend that your commission take comments on that item at this particular time. Based on correspondence we have received, based on our discussions with members of the public, there is a lot of confusion regarding specifically what the project is that is being considered. We do not have a staff report that we prepared for your commission this evening for that project. Staff is not ready to give a full presentation regarding what that project is, be able to answer some of the questions and comments that may come up. I believe that any comments, if we receive them at this time, would be able to be taken out of context potentially, and those providing those comments may actually have different comments that they want to provide once they actually hear the presentation. So I do appreciate anybody that came here wanting to make sure that this item wasn't considered. We tried to reach out to everybody we could to let them know that we are recommending a continuance, but people, you know, may have not been able to hear from us, or they decided to come anyway. So with all of that, I know there's a number of people in the audience here. I do not recommend your commission take comments on that item, but we staff will be fully prepared to present this project for consideration by your commission at the next meeting on June 23, 2022. That completes the reading of the cases withdrawn or requested for continuance.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Members of the commission, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the case withdrawn on number three, number six, to be heard on a continuance, as read by Mr. Murphy.
I'll second.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item E, consent agenda.
I have a question about one of the items.
Please come to the mic.
Mr. Chairman, this is where I should read the consent calendar first before, because we haven't gone over the consent calendar yet.
I thought you were talking about this one we just moved.
No, consent, not the four on.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. My mistake. I thought you were talking about this we just went over. Sorry about that.
Yep, yep. No, we'll get to that. So please stand by. We'll get to that right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay. These are items scheduled for the Planning Commission, which are being recommended approval, and the applicant has been informed of a speciality to have no objection. The hearing may be expedited if no member of the commission or audience wishes to comment or ask questions of the case, so at that time, go for that. Okay. Mr. Murphy?
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we have six items that are on the consent calendar. The first item is case number two. This is zone change case number 45, map 232, map number 48, map 232. Our applicant is Tumbleweed Solar LLC by Matthew Gilliland. This project is located at 1,000 Gaskell Road in the Rosemond area. The request before your commission is a change in zone classification from E 2 and 1/2 RS FPS to A FPS, or a more restricted district. Project also includes a conditional use permit that will allow for the construction and operation of an energy storage facility and associated infrastructure in an A-zone district. The staff recommendation is to advise your commission to recommend the board of supervisors to adopt Section 15091 Findings of Fact and Section 15093 Statement of Overriding Considerations, adopt the mitigation measure monitoring program, enact ordinance, and adopt resolution approving zone change as recommended by staff, approve conditional use permit subject to recommend conditions, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. The next item on consent is case number four. This is CUP 140, map 101. Our applicant is Andrew Coombs by DeWalt Corporation. This project is located at the intersection of the Rudd Avenue and Hagman Road area in Bakersfield. The request before your commission is a conditional use permit to allow private soccer fields of footsaw courts with equipment, storage, and structure and parking on a 17.90 acre portion of an A-zone district. Your commission did receive an addendum regarding this particular project. Some of the conditions staff recommended be changed through consultation with the project applicant. In addition, some maps and some other background information regarding the project site were inadvertently, along with pictures, were inadvertently left off the staff report that was prepared for your commission. Therefore, they were provided to you in this addendum staff report. The project applicant has reviewed the condition as is in concurrence with the recommendations as being provided. Therefore, there is a revised recommendation before your commission. The recommendation is to approve conditional use permit in accordance with the revised recommended condition and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached revised resolution. The next item on consent this evening is case number five. Case number five is conditional use permit 18, map 10430. Our applicant is the Islamic Shura Council of Bakersfield by Cornerstone Engineering. This project is located approximately 85 feet south of Kern Canyon Road and approximately 1,420 feet west of Vineland Road in unincorporated Bakersfield. The action before your commission is a conditional use permit to allow the construction of a cemetery to include a 3,928 square foot funeral, funeral home office and associated site improvements, all on an approximately 17.5 combined acres of property that is zoned R1 district. The staff recommendation is to approve conditional use permit subject to recommend conditions and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. The next item on consent this evening is case number seven. This is zone change case number five, map 179. Our applicant is the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department. Project is located on the south side of Proteus Road, approximately 650 feet east of Highway 14 in unincorporated Mojave. The action before your commission this evening is a staff-initiated change in zone classification for the following. For Area 1, it is a change from M3 PD District to CH District, or a more restrictive district on 111 acres. For Area 2, it is a change from
Great. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting, regular meeting of June 9th, 2022. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Ashley?
Here.
Commissioner Judge?
Here.
Commissioner McGiffney?
Here.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Here.
Commissioner Sprague? Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Slaton?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item B, Commission Member Announcements or Reports. On their own initiative, Commission members may make an announcement report on their own activities. They may ask a question for clarification, make referrals to staff, or take action to have staff place a matter of business on a future agenda. Do any of the Commission members have an announcement? Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just did want to announce, for your Commission's benefit, is there's a scheduling conflict with key members of our staff regarding the July 28th meeting. Therefore, we will actually not be having a meeting on July 28th. That meeting will be canceled. So I just wanted to let your Commissioners have that understanding well in advance, that there will be no meeting on July 28th.
And thank you for the heads up, Mr. Murphy. We appreciate it. Approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion for the approval of minutes dated May 12th, 2022.
I'll second.
Voice vote, please.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is approved. And minutes are approved. Item D, Cases Withdrawn, Request for Continuance. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. So we have two items that we are recommending a continuance today. The first is Zone Change Case Number Nine, Map 58, Act Preserve Number 14, Map 58 Exclusion, and then Modification Number Two, Map Number 58, and then Tentative Parcel Map Number One, Two, Four, Three, Six. The applicant is Daniel Rudnick by LAV Pinnacle Engineering. Staff is recommending that item be continued until June 23rd, 2022. The second item that we are recommending a continuance for is Case Number Six. This is the Kern County Housing Element Implementation 2022. The Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department is the applicant for this particular project. This is a project that consists of a number of changes in land use designation to rezone and redesignate land to higher density uses. Staff is recommending that item be continued to June 23rd, 2022 as well. I would note for your Commission that I do believe that there are a number of members of the audience, members in the audience that were here for that project specifically. While the item is on your agenda, I do not recommend that your Commission take comments on that item at this particular time. Based on correspondence we have received, based on our discussions with members of the public, there is a lot of confusion regarding specifically what the project is that is being considered. We do not have a staff report that we prepared for your Commission this evening for that project. Staff is not ready to give a full presentation regarding what that project is, be able to answer some of the questions and comments that may come up. I believe that any comments, if we receive them at this time, would be able to be taken out of context potentially, and those providing those comments may actually have different comments that they want to provide once they actually hear the presentation. So I do appreciate anybody that came here wanting to make sure that this item wasn't considered. We tried to reach out to everybody we could to let them know that we are recommending a continuance, but people, you know, may have not been able to hear from us, or they decided to come anyway. So with all of that, I know there's a number of people in the audience here. I do not recommend your Commission take comments on that item, but we staff will be fully prepared to present this project for consideration by your Commission at the next meeting on June 23rd, 2022. That completes the reading of the Cases Withdrawn or Requested for Continuance.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Members of the Commission, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the case withdrawn on Item Three, Number Six, to be heard on a continuance, as read by Mr. Murphy.
I'll second.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to Item E, Consent Agenda. Please come to the mic.
Mr. Chairman, this is where I should read the consent calendar first before, because we haven't gone over the consent calendar yet.
I thought you were talking about this one we just moved. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. My mistake. I thought you were talking about this we just went over. Sorry about that. Yep, yep, nope. We'll get to that. So please stand by. We'll get to that right now. Okay, thank you. Okay. These are the items scheduled for the Planning Commission, which are being recommended for approval, and the applicant has been informed of his speciality to have no objection. The hearing may be expedited if no member of the Commission or audience wishes to comment or ask questions of the case, so at that time, go for that. Okay. Mr. Murphy?
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we have six items that are on the consent calendar. The first item is Case Number Two. This is Zone Change Case Number 45, Map 232. Map Number 48, Map 232. Our applicant is Tumbleweed Solar LLC by Matthew Gililand. This project is located at 1,000 Gaskell Road in the Rosemond area. The request before your Commission is a change in zone classification from E 2 1/2 RS FPS to A FPS, or a more restricted district. Project also includes a conditional use permit that would allow for the construction and operation of an energy storage facility and associated infrastructure in an A-zone district. The staff recommendation is to advise your Commission to recommend the Board of Supervisors to adopt Section 15091 Findings of Fact and Section 15093 Statement of Overriding Considerations, adopt the mitigation measure monitoring program, enact ordinance and adopt resolution approving zone change as recommended by staff, approve conditional use permit subject to recommend conditions, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. The next item on consent is Case Number Four. This is CUP 140, Map 101. Our applicant is Andrew Coombs by DeWalt Corporation. This project is located at the intersection of the Rudd Avenue and Hagman Road area in Bakersfield. The request before your Commission is a conditional use permit to allow private soccer fields, a footsoff courts with equipment, storage, and structure, and parking on a 17.90 acre portion of an A-zone district. Your Commission did receive an addendum regarding this particular project. Some of the conditions staff recommended be changed through consultation with the project applicant. In addition, some maps and some other background information regarding the project site were inadvertently, along with pictures, were inadvertently left off the staff report that was prepared for your Commission. Therefore, they were provided to you in this addendum staff report. The project applicant has reviewed the condition as is in concurrence with the recommendations as being provided. Therefore, there is a revised recommendation before your Commission. The recommendation is to approve conditional use permit in accordance with the revised recommended condition and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached revised resolution. The next item on consent this evening is Case Number Five. Case Number Five is Conditional Use Permit 18, Map 10430. Our applicant is the Islamic Shura Council of Bakersfield by Cornerstone Engineering. This project is located approximately 85 feet south of Kern Canyon Road and approximately 1,420 feet west of Vineland Road in unincorporated Bakersfield. The action before your Commission is a conditional use permit to allow the construction of a cemetery to include a 3,928 square foot funeral, funeral home office and associated site improvements, all on an approximately 17.5 combined acres of property that is zoned R1 district. The staff recommendation is to approve conditional use permit subject to recommend conditions and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. The next item on consent this evening is Case Number Seven. This is Zone Change Case Number Five, Map 179. Our applicant is the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department. Project is located on the south side of Proteus Road, approximately 650 feet east of Highway 14 in unincorporated Mojave. The action before your Commission this evening is a staff-initiated change in zone classification for the following. For Area One, it is a change from M3 PD District to CH District, or a more restrictive district on 111 acres. For Area Two, it is a change from M3 PD District to an M2 District, or a more restrictive district on 142 acres. For Area Three, it's a zone change from M3 PD to M3, or a more restrictive district that's on 148 acres. And on Area Four, that is a zone change from M2 PD to CH District, or a more restrictive district on 127 acres. The staff recommendation is to advise your Commission to recommend the Board of Supervisors to approve the zone change as requested and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. The next case on the agenda is Case Number Eight. This is Zone Change Case Number Twenty-Eight, Map 23734. Our applicant is Emily Wainwright by French and Associates. This project is located generally near the southwest corner of Hauser Avenue and Le Bec Road in the Le Bec area. The application before your, or the request before your Commission is a change in zone classification from E 1/2 RS FPS GH CL to E 1/4 RS FPS GH, or a more restricted district on 21.87 acres of land. I would note that at 3 o'clock today, staff did receive two comments in opposition to this request from surrounding property owners. They were concerned about increasing the density from E 1/2 to E 1/4, and they provide, and those comments have been provided to your Commissioners this evening. Staff did review those comments. We do not believe that the change from E 1/2 CL, which allows for a 10% density bonus as it is, to E 1/4 would represent a significant change in any of the existing conditions, given existing development standards that would be required. And therefore, staff is recommending your Commission continue to leave the site on consent and recommend approval before the Board of Supervisors. So with that being said, the staff recommendation is to advise your Commission to recommend the Board of Supervisors to approve zone changes requested to become effective upon the recordation of Tentative Track Map Number 6203, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. And finally, the last case on the consent calendar this evening is CUP Number Three, Map 13914. Our applicant is Laura M. Melendez Ramos. This project is located on the southeast corner of Golf Course Road and Brandy Street in the Dustin Acres area. The request before your Commission is a conditional use permit to allow a manufactured home exceeding the 10-year age limit requirement on an approximately 1-acre parcel on property that is zoned A1. The staff recommendation is to approve conditional use permit in accordance with recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. That completes the reading of the consent calendar tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any members of the Commission have any comments about any of these cases? Hearing none. Do any member of the audience have any comments about any of these cases? Please come up to microphone, state your name for the record. Spell the name, please, and then kind of allow two minutes, about two minutes of comment per commenter. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Harvey. I'm a property owner in southern Mojave, halfway between Rosemond, I'm sorry, between the 14 freeway and Sierra Highway.
And which comment, or which case are you talking about?
Well, this is when I showed up here, May 26th, got to the door, and said it was rescheduled for tonight.
Which case are you talking about, sir?
I have an APN number, and ZCC number 65.
Chairman McGiffney, I believe, are you talking about a potential rezoning for, to high-density residential?
Correct.
I believe this is the case that we are recommending, that recommended continuance until the next Planning Commission meeting.
All the neighbors that I have are completely opposed to this. This property has two vacant homes that are wide open to anybody. There has been little or no attempt to try and board them up. I am literally 500 feet from, closer than one end of this building to the next. We've had thefts in the neighborhood.
I apologize, I'm sorry to interject, but.
Yeah. We're very concerned.
Sir, excuse me.
All of us are seniors.
Sir, one sec. Question to staff, this is a project we recommend not to have public comment on, is that correct?
I believe. Can you, what is the Zone Change Case Number that you are referencing? I just want to make sure that we have one other project in Mojave today.
I have an APN 430-030-10.
Can I see the hearing notice?
Of course.
And Chairman McGiffney, I think we want to just have members of the audience pull the items off consent, and then we'll allow public comment for each item they pull off consent.
Chairman McGiffney, based on a review of the hearing notice, yes, this is the item that staff recommended continuance and will be considered at your next Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, sir, this will be continued, continue the next meeting, and we'll take your comment then. I apologize that it did not happen. What's that?
A third time for the same issue?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to know one thing. Three members failed to show up to work the last time I showed up. Was they, were they paid for not showing up?
Sir, I'll tell you something right now. I was, I was at a presentation to present a young man the opportunity to go to Naval Academy. We could have changed the meeting, we could have postponed the meeting, but we did not. I apologize. It was termed by staff at that time we would postpone the meeting and continue the event. Okay, sir? So I, please, before disparaging comments to the staff or to the Commission, I appreciate your patience, but unfortunately, that's the rules we have in this board. We have to follow the rules.
Now I need to come back again a third time. I even have a letter from one of my neighbors that is vehemently opposed to this notion. We're all drawing off of a water table if they attempt to put a multi-apartment building in there, and I believe it's in a floodplain. So somebody needs to recheck what the heck's going on on this, and why these houses remain wide open to anybody. We're very concerned for our safety, sir. And I wouldn't have driven here twice if I didn't believe it was that important.
Understand. I appreciate your comment, and please, your comment's noted, and please be sure we're gonna take this comment up next week, or next in two weeks.
And then roll the dice, and maybe it'll be heard then?
Sir, we heard then, assuming nothing happens and we have a quorum, and we anticipate having a quorum. My apologies for your inconvenience. I'm very sorry for that.
Again, all the neighbors are seniors. We are all concerned for our safety. Nobody has done nothing about these vacant houses being left wide open, not boarded up, right off of Sierra Highway, if anybody could come and vote. And I'm literally 500 feet away. I'm concerned for my safety.
Sir, I suggest you talk to code enforcement as well. We're not code enforcement, but I suggest you do talk to them as well.
No. I was one of the few neighbors who even got a letter to show up here. I made it a priority to show up here.
Sir, I apologize, but we have to follow the rules.
Thank you for hearing.
You're welcome, sir. I do want to know if any item wants, we need to take it off consent, that's why I asked the question. Give the public the opportunity to comment on that. And if you would let us know what item you're commenting upon, and then we can just, then we can move forward here.
So, Continued Case, Item Number Four.
Okay. You wish to take that off consent? That's, that's my question.
Yes.
Okay. We will, we will vote here if there's any other items the public wants off consent to discuss in a timely manner. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay? Are there any other items on the consent agenda that we'd like to take off, the public would like taken off consent? Okay, hearing done. Please come up. Yeah. Sir, we'll, if that's the case, we'll take it off consent and go to regular order, if that's okay.
I'm sorry, you'll take it off consent, and we'll have another?
Right, right. I just, I'm just trying to get the items the public wants off consent before we got derailed. I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure, coming off consent, and it will be considered tonight, it will just be discussed later on?
Yes, yes.
Sylvia Bravo, item number five.
Okay, that is the Cornerstone Engineering project. You wish to take that off consent?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, my apologies for any inconveniences. Are there any other projects we'd like to take off consent? Please come up and let us know. This is on the consent agenda, okay? Not anything else.
Let me be clear. Gregory Davis, 2113 Olympic Drive in Oildale. And just so I'm clear, we're going to postpone this rezoning to R, to an R1 for the property between Highland Drive and Manor and Bedford, which is 22002. We're going to postpone that hearing until the 23rd, is that right?
Number seven?
Yeah. Yeah.
No, number seven's a new case, we're going, it was on consent agenda. Did you, would you like that pulled off consent?
Say it again, please.
That is item number seven, PP22002. Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
You would, it's a new case, would you like?
That's what my letter says.
Okay.
For the PP22002, for that property, for, to rezone it.
Okay.
For low-income housing, we're against it.
Okay. Would you like that pulled off the consent agenda? That is my question.
I'm sorry, Commissioner McGiffney, that is also item number six. What he referred to is item number six as well.
PP22002 is number seven on my list.
No, it's number six.
Says number seven right here.
Number seven on mine says 003.
I got, I have two. Okay.
We'll postpone for it?
Yes.
Okay, till the 23rd?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
There are no other members of the public that want to pull off items from the agenda. I would make a motion to approve consent items two, seven, eight, and nine.
I will second. And my apologies to the audience, I have a different agenda. I apologize, typo or something, so I apologize. There's a typo, I apologize. Sorry for my confusion. Okay. So we have a motion and a second for consent agenda, or continuing cases two, seven, eight, and nine to be on the, remain on the consent agenda? Is that correct? Okay, thank you. All right. Please vote.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
All right. Now we have.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Item number nine is final unless appealed.
Oh, it's final, okay.
So I'd like to, only other item nine. So I'd like to read the appeal process for item number nine.
All right, thank you.
For projects where the Planning Commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. Again, as of right now, that is item number nine, this is final. That appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2,700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms that we have available at the department and that are located on the department website. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of the hearing. If no appeal is received, the action of your Commission is final.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Okay. Now we're going to discuss two cases we pull off consent. And, Mr. Murphy, we'd like to go with the public presentations, or if there's any staff presentations?
There is, Mr. Chairman. So actually, this evening, we have three items to discuss. Case number one, and then the two items that were pulled off consent.
Correct. All right. Would we like to go with the consent items first pulled off, or we'd like to go with number one? That's my question.
Chairman McGiffney, I think you missed item F, Public Presentations.
Correct.
All right. I guess I did. My bad. Okay. My, my bad here, I apologize. We do have, pace for public presentations, this portion of the meeting. Okay, thank you. For persons whose desire to address the Commission, any may or not on the agenda, and over which we have jurisdiction, speaker's limited to two minutes, please state your name, come, and for the record, please before making your presentation, again, this is for anything not on the agenda, and is not, and, and the items that were continued does not include that as well. Anything else? Okay. All right. Mr. Murphy, how would you like to proceed on the continued versus the new cases?
Chairman, we have the people and the staff that is here sitting right now is ready to present item number one.
Okay, let's go with number one.
Given the fact we don't have to change chairs and everything, I would consider item number one.
That's fine. Let's do number one then, and we'll come back to the continued cases that we took off. Okay? All right. We got it. All right. Item number one.
All right.
Go, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So item number one is Illegal Nonconforming, Case Number One, Map 113. Our applicant is MatCon Corporation. The request is to consider vested mining rights for the existing Old Dutch Cleanser Mine in an A1 MH district. So the project before your Commission this evening, again, is a request for a hearing to consider vested mining rights for the existing Old Dutch Cleanser Mine Site. This request was originally considered at your February 24th, '22 hearing, and then again set for consideration on your May 12th, '22 hearing, but was continued until today to allow further review of submitted materials by staff. So the project site is approximately 280 acres, and is located on approximately 2 and 1/2 miles east at the intersection of State Route 14 and Red Rock in your Kern Road in eastern Kern County. The site is adjacent to the Red Rock Canyon State Park. The applicant for this request is MatCon Corporation, Inc. We have Mr. Joe Matheson here, who will be providing comments to your Commission. I would also like to note that since this project was previously considered, Mr. Matheson has retained the services of EnviroMine. They will also have representatives here tonight that will be providing comments to your Commission. So normally, when I give a presentation before your Commission, I provide you with a summary of the project before I give you our conclusion and recommendation. As our determinations have slightly changed since this project was originally presented to you, I think that it's easier to start with our conclusion and work backwards from there. So as a reminder, back in your February meeting, the department recommended that your Commission deny the request for vested mining status. At that time, it was also the department's position that the existing conditional use permit that previously authorized mining to occur on site had become abandoned and was no longer active. So while it is still a department's recommendation that your Commission deny the vested mining rights request, staff has concluded that while the existing conditional use permit may be inactive and out of compliance with the adopted conditions of approval, the approved CUP and the overall authorization to mine has never been officially revoked by the county through a public hearing process. So as such, it is the determination of staff that the existing mining entitlement is still in place, and thus can be reinitiated once the project proponent is in full compliance with all of the previously adopted conditions of approval. I would note, however, that based on the adopted conditions of approval, mining is limited to approximately 20-acre site that was approved back in the 1989 conditional use permit. So as with my previous presentation, I think it is important to discuss mining regulations in California. So mining operations in California are regulated by the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act of 1975, better known as SMARA. There are three requirements that need to be met to legally operate a mine in California. First, you have to have a mining permit or vested mining right status. That must be established. That is your mining entitlement. Second, you have to have an approved reclamation plan that is in place. That's how the site will be reclaimed once the operations have finished. And finally, you have to have financial assurances in place, and that is the money to ensure that reclamation occurs if the project applicant fails to do that. When it comes to mining, vested rights is the legal term that when applied to a mining, when applied to mining means that the identified site would be classified as a legal nonconforming use, and that the original mining application always, sorry, the original mining applicant always intended to mine the entire site. So the first official case law that is served as the primary baseline for which all decisions regarding vested mining rights are measured against is the Hanson Brothers Enterprises v Nevada County, which occurred in 1996. Generally speaking, the request for a vested mine is when an existing legal nonconforming mine that has been in continual operation requests a determination that the remaining portions of the property not being actively mined have the right to be mined in the future, and that mere changes in regulations do not extinguish the overall right to mine the entirety of the site. So for example, imagine that you have a 100-acre mining site, of which 20 acres are currently being mined under this legal nonconforming status. That site has an existing reclamation plan and financial assurances in place over those 20 acres. The request for vested mining status on the remaining acres of land, which have been continually owned by the mining entitlement holder, and which has always been intended to mine. So the circumstances regarding the project before your Commission are a little bit different than those I just explained, and are somewhat unique. So one, this site was not actively mined when the mining regulations were enacted. So one, this site was not actively mined when the mining regulations were enacted. SMARA was enacted in 1976, and we know that the site had not been mined since 1947. Second, in 1989, a formal condition of use permit was permitted and authorized mining to occur. With that approval came a list of conditions by which the mine was required to operate. Third, since approval of the above-listed CUP, various owners of the project site have operated the mine in a manner not consistent with the approved conditions of approval. Letters from the planning department date back from 1996 and between the years 2007 to 2010, describing various concerns regarding mining operations that were taking place. These violations were sufficient enough that at the time, the department sent a notice of violation and order to commence reclamation letter to the previous owner in March of 2010, stating that the mine had been inactive for 10 years without being in compliance with state requirements to classify the site as an idle mine, and thus was considered abandoned and needed to be reclaimed. So this mine has been, had 11 different owners throughout its history. MatCon and Mr. Joe Matheson has zoned the site on five separate occasions. Our records indicate that the project site was mined from the years 1923 to 1947. We do not have any record that the site was actively mined between the years 1947 to 1976, when SMARA took an effect. We also don't have any information that shows that any mining occurred between the years 1976 until 1989, when the conditional use permit authorizing mining to commence occurred. So again, in 1989, the Board of Zoning Adjustments approved conditional use permit one, map 113, that authorized mining to occur on site. As part of that consideration process, a reclamation plan was approved for the authorized mining, and all financial assurances were provided. We do know that that site was mined after the 1989 approval. So we know that active mining occurred between the years 1989 to 1997. We also know that intermittent mining occurred between the years 1997 to 2008. So during this time, I'd also note that mining did occur outside some of the authorized boundaries, and which is needing to be addressed through any reclamation as well. So between the years 2007 into 2013, again, staff had been in contact with the various property owners over the years, and notice of violations and order to commence reclamation were sent to the owner due to the fact that the mine had been deemed abandoned under the provisions of SMARA due to an inactivity on site. Opportunities were also provided to that permit operator to provide the interim management plan that would ensure that ongoing compliance with state law and would allow the mine to stay idle and active. Ultimately, reclamation did not occur on site, and IMP plan was never finalized. Eventually, the owner notified staff of their intent to continue mining and submitted a revised SMARA plan, which was being processed, condition use permit eight. In 2014, staff circulated a mitigated negative declaration for the proposed conditional use permit. In January of 2015, the project was brought forward for consideration to the planning commission, at which point the item was referred back to staff for preparation of an EIR due to comments submitted during the hearing. We also know that no mining activities have occurred on site since 2008. I would note, however, that from 2008 until now, mining has primarily not occurred due to the ongoing compliance and permitting issues with the project site. So between 2008 to now, that's a little bit of a different type of classification than some of the previous history of mining that I outlined previously. So based on the history of the project site, it is staff's determination that there is not sufficient evidence that has been submitted by the project applicant that would allow staff to determine that the project qualifies for vested mining right status under state law. In addition, staff does not even necessarily believe that the request qualifies to be considered for vested rights, because under the law and definition, vesting rights can only be given to a legal nonconforming use of land. Per the California Supreme Court, nonconforming uses of land are defined as, "A legal nonconforming use is one that existed lawfully before zoning restriction became effective and that is not in conformity with the ordinance when it continues thereafter." The use of the land, not its ownership at the time of the use, becomes nonconforming determines the right to continue the use, and transfer of title does not affect the right to continue a lawful, again, the word, "nonconforming" use, which runs with the land. So I would point out that at no time in its history has this site ever been operated as a mine under a legal nonconforming status. We do know that mining occurred between 1923 and 1947. During this time, there was no zoning in place, and there were no state laws that managed overall mining activities. After that, the next time the site was actively mined was after and in conformance with conditional use permit one, map 113. The Old Dutch Cleanser Mine has never been considered legal nonconforming, and it was not actively being mined when SMARA was enacted in 1976, or when any county adopted our mining ordinance provisions in 1977. So as part of this review, staff has requested from the applicant any evidence that the site has been mined since 1947 that would allow further establishment that a legal nonconforming status existed and to be able to meet that requirement. The only evidence that has been provided to date is a letter from Purex, who owned the site from 1947 to 1983, to MatCon, who was interested in buying that site. In their letter, Purex stated, "Frankly, since we have been operating the mine over the years with every intention to continue mining, we have had no issues with easements or access rights. I believe your attorney will advise you of your prescriptive rights to ingress and egress over the existing roads to the property, and as the property consists of 14 patented mining claims, access would normally be conditions of that patent." So to staff's opinion, that that information alone is not sufficient to determine that the mine is a legal nonconforming land use, as defined by the courts, and thus is subject to consideration for vested mining right status under the law. It is the understanding and opinion of staff that in order to qualify for vested mining right status under the California law and is determined by the courts, the mine had to actively be in operation on December 31st, 1975, the day before the state SMARA regulations became effective. Second, regardless of the vesting status rights, the county approved CUP one, map 113, in 1989, which serves as the mining entitlement for the project site. The project applicant will be presenting information to your commission that under a vested mining rights law, abandonment of a nonconforming use ordinarily depends on a concurrence of two factors. One, an intention to abandon mining activity, and two, an overt act or failure to act, which carries the implication the owner does not claim to retain any interest in the right to the, again, "nonconforming" use. That word is mentioned many times. The mere ceasing, the mere cessation, the mere ceasing activities, I can't think of it off the top of my head, does not in and of itself mean that the mine is abandoned. So staff overall is in agreement with those provisions, and it is our opinion, under those provisions, that they cannot be met in this particular case. First, I'd like to talk about the intention to abandon. Again, as I previously said, staff does not believe there is sufficient evidence that has been provided that Purex did not intend to abandon the mine themselves during their ownership from 1947 to 1983, other than the letter from a owner to a potential buyer. The site was not in operation on December 31st, 1995, and I have no record of any communications to staff, to the state of California, even after 1976, when the new mining laws took into effect. One would assume that if you owned a mine, and new state laws were being established that specified you needed to have permits, and the county was establishing new state laws that you had to have permits, you would think that there would be some sort of communication that the owner of a mine would contact staff to say they were interested in making sure that they were able to continue their existing mining operations. Again, staff does not have any evidence that has been provided to us regarding anything under those circumstances. Second, I'd like to talk about the provision that states abandonment requires an overt act or failure to act, which carries the implication the owner does not claim to or retain any interest in the right to a nonconforming use. As discussed and provided in the staff report, since approval of the CUP one, map 113, staff had sent various owners over the years, letters indicating that the mine is not being operated in accordance with the approved conditions of approval and in compliance with state law. Again, examples include, but are not limited to, failure to maintain yearly financial assurances, which have been met on separate occasions, failure to provide adequate evidence that the site is operating in compliance with state fish and wildlife requirements specifically related to fully protected desert tortoise, and additionally, submittal of state-required interim management plan that would allow for the site to maintain an active idle status during those periods of time in which mining was not occurring due to market or other unauthorized reasons. So as will be presented and how is agreed upon, mining is cyclical type of business. At times, the materials are in demand and more mining occurs. At other times, the materials may not be in demand and less mining occurs. The state of California understands that and has provisions to regulate, how do we make sure that project sites are still considered active even though they are not producing levels of materials that they had previously over the year? The way to do that is to submit and have approved appropriate interim management plans. Staff has provided correspondence over the years to the applicant stating that that needed to occur, which never did. Staff considers these actions, or in this particular case, inactions, as both an overt act and a failure to act as specified the law when it comes to the determination as whether or not the site is qualified or can be considered abandoned. Rightly or wrongly, other than the applicant, based on all the actions or inactions taken to date, it is the general understanding from various agencies that the site was officially abandoned sometime after 2008. Staff positions that the actions, that these actions represent a failure to act and thus allowing a vested mining rights determination to be made under this particular case. Now, as presented in our last meeting, it was staff's determination that processing a new condition of use permit further implied that the project applicant had abandoned the previous mining activity. I would note that staff no longer has that determination. There are many times and circumstances by which an applicant may choose to process a new condition of use permit when they have an existing condition of use permit in place. Maybe they have new operations, maybe there are new boundaries. Again, that is something that does occur. So staff does agree that the mere fact that the project applicant began processing a new CUP does not mean that that site was abandoned, and that is, that processing of that CUP is not being considered a factor in the determination that a vested right status is not appropriate in this case by staff at this time. As I mentioned earlier in this presentation, staff has changed our initial determination that existing condition use permit number one, map 113, is expired and are null and void. While there are a number of compliance issues that need to be resolved before mining could occur, at no time has your commission or the Board of Supervisors taken official regulatory action to revoke the existing CUP. While there are times that a CUP can become expired or null and void without formal hearing, I would like to note that for this project, throughout the ownership of the site by the project proponent, for the most part, MatCon has continued to pay yearly inspection fee requirements to the county of Kern. Because of this, it is staff's determination that the existing CUP is active but not in compliance with adopted conditions of approval, and no mining could occur until the project proponent provides staff with the necessary documentation showing that they are in full compliance with the adopted conditions of approval. A letter outlining this determination was sent to the project applicant on May 18th, 2022, and has been attached to your addendum staff report. During the process of this request, notices were sent to properties within 1,000 feet of the site. A number of comments were received, all opposed to the mining activities commencing on site due to concerns regarding the adjacent Red Rock Canyon State Park and potential impacts to biological resources. Since those previous consideration of this project, staff received additional letters that have been provided. Those additional letters reiterate previous concerns regarding how mining will impact the adjacent park and endangered species. At this time, it is not the determination of the planning department that mining could not or should not occur on site. It is the determination of the planning department that the site does not qualify for vested right status under state law for reasons that I presented earlier. It is further the department's determination that while the existing CUP one, map 113, is out of compliance with the required conditions of approval, staff has continued to accept from the project applicant yearly inspection fees. The collection of these fees, in combination with the fact that the CUP has never been officially revoked under the requirements of law and due process, has led staff to the conclusion that the existing CUP is still in place. Therefore, this CUP needs to be treated as any other CUP that is out of compliance. The project applicant will have an opportunity to provide staff documentation showing that all of the required conditions of approval are met. Once that is the case, mining can resume on site. If the project continues to be out of compliance, staff will at a subsequent date set the item for consideration before your commission for enforcement proceedings, which may include at that time discussions pertaining regarding revocation of the permit if the conditions cannot be met. For the record, I would also like to note that there are two typographical errors within the body of the staff report that were carried over from our previous discussions in February. The first can be found on page six, second to last paragraph. The staff report currently reads, "The applicant would need to obtain approval of a new CUP for surface mining and a reclamation plan to be allowed to conduct any additional mining." As I just presented, that is an incorrect statement as the existing CUP is still in effect and can be implemented with adherence of all the required conditions of approval. The second correction can be found on page eight, last paragraph. The staff report reads, "At this time, a mining entitlement does not exist pertaining to the project site." Again, as I just presented, that is an incorrect statement. There is an existing mining entitlement authorized under CUP one, map 113. That entitlement is just out of compliance, and therefore, no mining can occur until those conditions of approval can be met. In conclusion, it is the department's recommendation that your commission deny the request for a determination of vested mining rights and require submittal of documentation verifying that compliance has been achieved with all of the adopted conditions of approval of conditional use permit number one, map 113, and adequate financial assurances for the reclamation plan approved by the Kern County Public Works Department are in place prior to the commencement of any mining activity on site. That completes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions your commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Do we have a presentation from the audience here on this item, Mr. Murphy?
We do. We have our project applicant, Mr. Matheson and his representatives. They have a PowerPoint that they have been provided to, to staff. We have that available electronically. They have also provided your commission an additional PowerPoint. 99% of this is the same. There are two pages that are in this PowerPoint that are not on the electronic presentation, and we'll be able to show those on the overhead when we get to that part of the presentation. But yes, we are ready for a project.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Welcome, please proceed.
Good evening. And I'd like to thank the planning commission and the county staff for this opportunity to again, present our request for a vesting determination for our Old Dutch Cleanser Mine located in Kern County. To again introduce myself, I'm Joe Matheson, President of MatCon Corporation, and owner of the Old Dutch Cleanser Mine, which for those that don't know, is a 288-acre privately-owned mine property located 16 miles south of Ridgecrest, 34 miles north of Mojave, and located within the boundaries of the Red Rock Canyon State Park. As a background, I'm a civil engineer, a mining engineer, and a retired Army officer. I've owned this, I've owned this property for 35 years, and have been paying county, state, mining, and property taxes for all that period of time. Every year, we've paid all of our fees and filed all of our reports for both Kern County and for the California Office of the Mine Reclamation. Kern County is my second home. I spent many years developing, providing, I have a number of mine properties, but this is my primary one, in Kern County. And I've spent many years developing this site and providing low-cost mineral products to various projects here in Kern County and for agricultural markets across the county. Your favorable consideration of my request for a positive determination for vesting will help restore this valuable mineral asset to the local economy, bring in good-paying jobs, and also increase the taxes to Kern County and help benefit the environment overall. It's important, is important to your understanding of this mine that its mineral deposits have been developed since 1923. Down through the years, it's been mined pretty much steady down through all that period of time, and county staff does not have adequate determination, and it has not. We have a letter, as you said, from the Purex Corporation that indicates that they had an intent to continue mining at the time that we acquired it from them. And we fought for three years to get the initial permit from 1986 when we bought it for 1989, when it was in fact approved. And since that time, mining has always been the intent and always been the goal throughout. Next slide, please. For those of you unfamiliar with the mine operation, it's originally 1923. Its primary component and product was seismatite, which is another word for, word for pumice or pumicide, was used in the Old Dutch Cleanser Mine product that many of you more senior folks may have had as children be able to clean bathtubs and showers. And when the fiberglass industry took over making sinks and tubs, why, that particular product fell out of service, although it was used in the abrasives industry and for other products as well. Next slide, please. This is, this is current mining operations or what mining operations were before the county stopped us from mining. Basically, it's a surface mine operation, which is different than what it was during the time that Purex had it, when it was underground, corporate, underground mining. The material is a pure white material, fine-grained pozlin material that is right now in high demand as a replacement for the fly ash that the current coal-fired power plants are losing because they're being shut down, and it's a component that's right now in great demand for the cement industry to reduce carbon, the CO2 and the emissions and a help to the environment. Next slide, please. Our bentonite mining is another product, it's a two-product mine, actually, it's a three-product mine, but the two primary products are the pumicide and the bentonite mining. This was used in landfill liners, ponds, lagoons, reservoirs, and in fact, was used to supply the landfill cap for the Mark McFarlane Delano landfill here in Kern, Kern County. It's also been in demand as well. And I'd point out to the, to the board that since, since 2000, they say 2008, but it was actually 2000, probably 10, for the last 10 years, that mine would have been in operation hadn't we known that our CUP was, was still in effect, was active, and that we could mine. And all we had to do was to comply with several of the conditions that were referenced here. So it's somewhat irritating that we had to wait 10 years to find this out when county could have very easily told us that. But during that same 10-year period of time, they insisted that not only did we have to apply for a new conditional use permit and go through a EIR... apply for a new conditional use permit and go through a EIR, when indeed with the checking of their records, they could have easily found out that our mine was still, our permit was still active, and we could have been mining during this period of time. After my last presentation to the board, back in, next slide, please. The bentonite, just to familiarize you with it, bentonite, calcium bentonite clay, has a lot of uses. It's used in cattle feed primarily. It's used in sealant for asphalt, seal coats, and parking lots. It's also used to seal liners and landfill caps and liners. And so it's a valuable mineral product that is unique to this area, particularly used in LA for a lot of different products. And we have lost out on that market over the last 10 years by being unable to mine it. Next slide, please. Right now, as I said, the pumice pozilins are a replacement for their natural pozilin or a replacement for the fly ash. It's a far superior product because it's called a natural pozilin as opposed to a coal-fired power plant fly ash. And rapidly, it's being sought after right now by a number of different companies for replacement of that, particularly the ready-mix companies that are having problems being able to meet their requirements for fly ash in their concrete mixes. Next slide, please. After my last presentation back in, I guess it was February, March, it was the position of the board that you wish to see additional information presented regarding the vested mine policy, where and how it's been used in the past, when the legal cases and precedents some demonstrate exactly the validity of our request. Basically, you want to see, has it been done someplace else, or is Kern County going to be the guinea pig for vesting? In that regard, in order to do this, make a presentation here and educate the commission on the vesting process, I retained two experts in mine permitting who have assisted other miners to successfully obtain a number of vested determinations in other counties in California and even right here in Kern County. I would therefore like to turn my presentation at this time over to Mr. Warren Colson, who is at the EnviroMine Company, and he will continue to explain to you and present our case for vesting and why we feel it is valid and in fact worthy of consideration by the board. Mr. Colson.
Thank you, Joe. Good evening. My name's Warren Colson. I'm president of EnviroMine. We are a consulting company based out of San Diego. We work all over the western United States, however. I've been in the mining industry for roughly 45 years and worked in a coal mine in Wyoming for eight years and came back to California and started my own business. But just a little bit about me. And Joe came from the engineering side of the business. I came from the reclamation side of it. So the history of ownership, it's been owned by eleven different interests, I guess, over time. Cudahy Packing Company had it for about 25 years or so. They sold it to Purex. Purex mined it for a piece and then quit. Sold it to MatCon. You know, they were all mining interests. Every one of them had an interest in the minerals on the site. MatCon sold it to Red Rock Canyon Materials. He retained a royalty interest in the property. And when they've decided that they weren't going to mine anymore, he foreclosed on them and took it back in ownership. Did this three times. During this period of time that he's owned the property, 35 years or so, he's paid $215,000 in property taxes, $35,000 in compliance fees to the county, and $159,000 in compliance fees to the state. So he's not walking away from anything. This is his intention. This is his life. Next slide, please. California Surface Mining Reclamation Act. When it started out, it was a pretty small thing, you know, about 15 pages of statutes. On top of that, they made multiple modifications to the law, and today it's 160 pages. And, you know, I deal with it every day, and I sometimes get things wrong. I hate to admit that, but sometimes I get things wrong. And it's implemented by 110 lead agencies around the state. And they, in most cases, planning staff deal with a mining project once or twice a year, very infrequently. And there's a lot of nuance to the law, and if you don't really get a chance to work it every day, you're going to miss a lot of things. Next slide, please. Okay, just to talk about vested rights. Okay, in SARA, it says, "A person shall be deemed to have vested rights if, prior to January 1, 1976, he has in good faith and in reliance upon a permit or other authorization, if the permit or other authorization was required, diligently commenced surface mining operations." It says, "If he commenced those before January 176." Didn't mean he had to be doing it on January 176. If he commenced those operations before January 176. And the general rules for non-conforming use are, the use exists before restrictive operations, restrictions to the operations, to the restrictive ordinance, I'm sorry. It was lawful when it began and substantial nature warranting constitutional protection of the property right. And, you know, the use absolutely existed prior to zoning restriction or SARA. It was lawful when it began. There were no rules against it. You just went, you had a piece of land, you did what you wanted to with it. And it was pretty substantial. They had mined the property for 20 years plus, and, you know, so they had quite an investment in it. Next slide, please. The burden of proof and procedure, okay, is the landowner's standard is preponderance of evidence. In other words, I got to show you at least 51% that I'm making my case. County standard for claiming abandonment is showing by clear and convincing evidence that the landowner knowingly, he knew what he was doing, and intentionally waived the vested right. So, you know, just because I walked away from it for now because I'm not making any money, doesn't mean I abandoned the site. Means I wasn't making any money and I had to go do something else for now. Next slide, please. Waiver is the intentional relinquishment of a known right after full knowledge of the facts. So you got to know what you're doing. You know, oh gosh, I just abandoned that thing. Well, I abandoned it today, but I'm going to be back tomorrow. And so you have to know what abandonment means. You can't just pull that from a casual discussion. And a waiver of a constitutional right requires a knowing and intentional relinquishment of that right, and such a waiver is disfavored in the law. And that's a fairly recent, 2010 California court decision up in the county of Yuma on vested rights. Next, please. Okay, the first vested rights court case that came around was Hanson Brothers, and that was in 1996. And, you know, most of these operators, they didn't know what a vested right was. Some of the people in the agencies got it and helped these people get through it. But in most cases, the operators didn't know. I mean, particularly back, if you go back 40 years, there were a lot more mining operators than there are today. More and more, the big monopolies are coming in and taking over, and it's pushing all the mom-and-pop shops out. So, and they have trained staff. They know this stuff. But the little operator, he didn't know any of this stuff, just pretty much had to take it from whatever the agency told him. And so, you know, abandonment of a non-conforming use ordinarily depends upon a concurrence of two factors, an intention to abandon. Did Joe Mathewson, did he intend to abandon his operation? No, he just couldn't produce any material because he couldn't, didn't have a market for it. Mere cessation of use does not of itself amount to abandonment. And there's a case in Great Britain. Must have been England in those days. It was like 1810. It was in one of their courts. This was that Seaman versus Hodgery. It is well-known that mines remain unrot for generations, that they are frequently purchased and reserved, not only without any view of immediate working, but for the express purpose of keeping them unrot until other mines shall be exhausted, which may not be for a long period of time. Next slide, please. And here's the letter that Mr. Murphy read to you here. This is from Purex Corporation. Was not abandoned. They'd been operating the mine over the years with every intention to continue. They sold it to MatCon. MatCon got in there, figured out he had to get a permit, because they didn't know any better. He got a permit and went about mining the site. Then he went through a series of different acquisitions and recovery, acquisition, recovery, all the time retaining a royalty interest in the site. His property taxes, again, were, you know, $215,000 he paid over that time, $35,000 in compliance fees, and not to mention $159,000 he's paid for the Department of Conservation. Next slide, please. When did vesting occur? The county's first ordinance that restricted mining was 1977. The Surface Mine Reclamation Act was January 1, 1976, so January 1, 76 was the vesting date. Next slide, please. Why didn't MatCon get a conditional use permit? Well, number one, they didn't know any better. They were told by the county it was required in 1986. The CUP was finally approved, went through a process, spent quite a bit of money, finally got it approved in 1989. The first vested rights case didn't come long till 1996. So, you know, most people just really didn't know. Acquiring a CUP does not indicate abandonment. Next slide, please. How does the Old Dutch Cleanser Mine qualify for vesting? In 86, MatCon Corporation was unaware of and did not understand their vested mining right existed at the time of mine purchase. But acting in good faith with Kern County staff guidance and believing that SARA permitting was their only available option, MatCon diligently worked for three years and got the CUP. Following permitting, MatCon actively operated the mine, producing products, and developing the market for 22 years. Next slide, please. The preponderance of evidence means just a little bit more than half. The claimant has the burden of proof demonstrating its claim for vested rights. So MatCon has got to demonstrate this. Okay, leading, she shall determine whether the claimant, by a preponderance of evidence, demonstrated through testimony and exhibits enough evidence to support the claim for vesting. The amount of evidence that constitute preponderance cannot be reduced to a simple formula and has been generally described as just enough evidence to make it more likely than not that the fact a claimant seeks to prove is true. Next slide, please. Now, the planning commission had some requests at the last hearing that was continued back in February 24th. And one of them was to demonstrate that there's a case law regarding vested rights exist and that previous cases has been successful. And we'll talk about that in a second. And to demonstrate that there are precedent cases in other counties that recognize vesting. And clarify, the Kern County staff report is not accurate, and we believe misleading. Explain in greater detail why the Old Cleanser Mine, I like ODC, it's easier, qualifies for vesting even though the conditional use permit has never been revoked. Next slide, please. Okay, clarification. Now, staff made this comment, and they made it again tonight. A site must be actively mining on 12/31/75. That's the day before SARA took effect, to have a vested mining right. But here's what SARA says. "A person shall be deemed to have vested rights if, prior to January 176, he or she has in good faith and reliance upon a permit or other authorization, if the permit was required, diligently commenced surface mining operations and incurred substantial liabilities for work and materials necessary therefore." It doesn't say you have to be operating on January 1, 1976, or your vested rights goes away. That's ridiculous. We recently, well, it's been three years ago now, in San Bernardino County, we completed a vested rights determination for a property over there. They obtained the property by patent in the same year as the Old Dutch Cleanser Mine, 1923. As a limestone property, they mined it on again, off again for 40 years. And the railroad, there's right there in Cajon Pass, railroad came in and knocked out their kiln and shut them down. Since that time, they'd been trying to get somebody to mine the site, to sell it to them, to mine it. They did several geology reports. We did a couple for them. And with no luck. And I said, you know, I think we ought to do a vested rights determination on this. So just like with Kern County, we had to spend a little time working with the staff so they understood really what we were trying to get at. It took us over a year to come together with a presentation or a process for getting to a vested rights determination. You have to have a hearing before legislative body. And so we finally got it and went through it. And the staff did not support the vested rights determination. And San Bernardino County staff, George Kenline, had worked in the mining industry for 40 years. He was no dummy. He knew SARA better than I do, but not quite. And but from their determination on that, they said, "Because there's no evidence in the record that exists showing intent to abandon the mineral interest and continue mining the properties, vested mining rights exist." Now, I don't know how that's different than what we're doing here. Next slide, please. Now, ask about, where else did they do vested rights determination? Here's a whole list of them. You know, quite a few of these were, you know, operations didn't get reclamation plans until 15 years after SARA was adopted. You got the Hubs Quarry in Riverside County didn't get a reclamation plan until 1994, but they have vested right. The, one really interesting here, the Schneider Historic Mine in Sacramento County. 2002, the county approved a reclamation plan and determined that the site had vested mining rights. In fact, there'd been mining on this site for well over 100 years. There'd been a lot of gold dredging and that kind of thing. Well, one of their competitors in the aggregate market did not like all the competition because they were starting to produce quite a lot of material. And so they... And so, they chummed up with the board of supervisors and they got a hearing together and revoked the vested mining rights. It's something government can't do. They revoked the vested mining rights and shut the operation down. Well, the landowner sued, landowner and the operator sued, and the county is on the hook for $105 million in claims and losses on that suit. There's a number of these sites that are listed up here that had conditional use permits. But over the, you know, over the time, their conditional use permit would come to expiration. And we'd look at them and say, you know, you were mining back here in the 1940s and the first ordinance that restricted mining was in '78, so, you know, I think you got a vested right. So, we went through and worked with the staff and went to hearings and got some of these approved. Several of these had to go to court to get them done. Hanson Brothers versus Nevada County is the landmark case, 1996. Calbert versus Yuba County, 2006. And Western Aggregates in 2010, that's the case that set up the requirement for a hearing for a vested rights determination. National Quarries was a site that I worked on in San Diego County. They had a, they had, it was a dimension stone quarry, they had slab granite. And they had a permit for a rock saw, even though it, you know, was generally recognized that they had a vested right. But they had this permit for a rock saw and it was expiring. So, the landowner got a new permit for this, but the county attached a condition on there that they could only have 30 outbound truckloads a week. And that killed their aggregate business. So, they went to court over the deal. And after about an hour of testimony in court, the judge stopped it and said, "You got a vested right, you don't need this permit." And that was the end of that. There was also another one, Hardesty versus State Mining Geology Board, we'll get to that more in just a minute. Another clarification. The county does have financial assurances for this site. One of the people Joe sold the site to had posted a portion of this, but that guy, when he foreclosed on the property, he took that financial assurance also. So, he does have $81,000 in financial assurance available. The reclamation obligation's only $68,000. So, there's plenty of money in there for that. Next, please. A vested right isn't a ministerial action subject to SEQA. It's just not. I mean, listen to the attorney saying, oh, this is, you know, this is legislative action. The termination of vested rights is simply a recognition of the existing legal right to extract resources, and therefore, the decision does not result in a direct or indirect physical change in the environment. So, it, it's not subject to SEQA. Next, please. Okay, there's another clarification from the meeting. Our county staff indicated to Mr. Mathewson that you chose your path and you have to stick with it. You got a permit, so you got to do another one. You know, other, there are a number of other vested rights operations that had permits and we got vested rights determinations on them. One of them was National Quarries in San Diego I just told you about a moment ago. Spring Valley Quarry in, in Yuba County had a conditional use permit, was up for, they had to do it again, and we got the vested rights determination, that was about one year ago. And then, oh yeah, the Sand Canyon Mine, which was in Kern County, and we just got that one done, on consent in January. Next, please. The current situation. Today, the site is idle, but it's purely because of permit issues. I think Mr. Murphy talked about that a moment ago. The only legal remedy to reentitle mining activity at the site is to secure an approval of a new mine, surface mine permit. That was in the staff report. MatCon had pursued a CUP without knowledge of vested rights. And as I said, you know, most of these small miners don't, don't know the law very well. The intent to abandon, or is it a business decision to await the correct market conditions? An operator might be forced to continue operations at a loss, and that's just not going to happen. There's too much money involved. In order to await market recovery in some unknowable future, that was in a Hardesty court case, a mere cessation of use does not of itself amount to abandonment. That was Hardesty versus State Mining and Geology Board. Next, please. Preponderance of evidence. Mining was established pre-SMARA, pre-zoning restriction. Owned solely by mineral producers with every intent to continue mining when the market was available. Minerals on site are a benefit to society. I don't think Joe really covered what pozolin is, but pozolin is an additive to, to cement, to concrete. It makes it stronger, it fights off reactivity issues, and it's very important, and particularly they're shutting down so many coal-fired power plants. The fly ash that comes out of the coal-fired power plants is used as this pozolin. And they're shutting down so many of them. We just got hired to do a study for all of California, Arizona, and Nevada to find out where natural pozolin sources were, because they're unable to get it from, from, you know, coal plants. It's just farther and farther away. On again, off again, market conditions. You never know, you can't tell. You know, in 2008, 2009, the aggregate business fell by 70%. I'm boring you, aren't I? So, you know, MatCon has maintained a reclamation plan, financial assurances, and he's paid all of his inspection fees, has tried to stay in compliance. He's idle today due to, to the permitting issues. County has to prove an intent to abandon the mine. They cannot do that. It has to be clear and convincing evidence. Abandonment is an intentional relinquishment of a known right. Next slide, please. Just, I'm getting towards the end here. Surface mining operations commenced at the Old Dutch Cleanser Mine as early as 1923 with commercial operations occurring to meet market demand. County first adopted its zoning restriction for mining in 1977, and that post-dates SMARA, which came along in January 1, '76. As of the vesting date, mining operations were inactive, but were not abandoned and have continued to produce valuable mineral products when market conditions allow. Next slide, please. Although MatCon applied for and obtained a county CUP and reclamation plan in 1989, those authorizations do not constitute a waiver of a vested right to mine. Moreover, there is no evidence in the record of an intent or overt act by the mine operators to abandon the vested mining right. And I want to just highlight that. Government cannot cancel a vested right. That, you saw what happened in that Sacramento case. Because the evidence in the record establishes an objective manifestation of intent to continue mining the Old Dutch Cleanser Mine, a vested right exists allowing surface mining operations to extend across the entire mine property. The vested mining right includes the right to mine, process, sort, stockpile, haul, distribute the materials previously described from the mine, including all uses typically ancillary to such surface mining operations. Next, please. And finally, vested mining right includes the right to produce material in response to market demand, subject only to the impermissible increase rule established in the Hanson decision. Next. Other factors. As vested determination provides protections to the mine owner and operator moving forward with active mining operations that have been stalled for 10 years. Please do this. A vested right determination does not eliminate the need to reclaim mined lands or avoid compliance with other laws. You still have to comply with the Stormwater, Air Quality, Endangered Species Act and all that. Next, please. Questions, qualifications, I'm happy to answer. I'm sorry I took so long.
Thank you, sir. Any of our commissioners have any questions for our applicant?
Yes, Chairman, I have a quick question. Can you clarify when your, the current applicant you're speaking of took original ownership of this mine?
Joe, I think it'd be better for you to answer these.
We purchased it in 1983. American Standard Industrial Services. MatCon purchased it from American Standard Industrial, and I was the president of American Standard Industrial Services at the time. MatCon was formed at the dissolution of that, and we bought it in 1986. And from 1986, 1989, we worked on getting it permitted through the county because we didn't, we were dummies and didn't know any better. And so, that's the timeline.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I have a, Mr., thank you. I have a question for Mr. Murphy. Just to help me understand the clarification of this. Is the concern the applicant is bringing up of this mining concern, is it, I understand the vesting right issue has been talked about in depth. I just want to understand, are they concerned that the original CUP does not allow surface mining versus now they want to surface mine? Can you help me clarify what their true ask is here? Outside of the vested right?
Commissioner, Judge, the Chair, I mean, their ask is for a vested mining right status. Again, a lot of comments that were brought up today about the CUP, and you absolutely can have a CUP and still have vested mining right status. So, you, your commission just did that. Again, many times, and this is what this condition is unique, most, and I would imagine 90%, if all of that stuff that was presented, those operators were actively mining, and they're mining a smaller area. Think of a big mountain. I'm mining the side of a mountain, and that's all I have approval for. Vested mining was, well, my intent is really to mine that entire mountain, but at the time I was mining, there was no requirement that I had to have a permit that covered the whole thing or anything along those lines. I was just actively mining that part of it, just like with the case that your commission approved. That request was for vested mining rights, for I want to mine the rest of it. Clearly, they still have to adhere to all the state laws and everything, and they have to have a reclamation plan in place. The difference between this particular project, and, you know, I just, Mr. Hall can provide further clarification. One, staff fundamentally disagrees with the statement that you didn't have to be mining by the date SMARA took into effect. Legal nonconforming use was mentioned many times in all the court cases that have come forward and says you had to have it prevying. You know, legal nonconforming is, I'm operating, regulations came into effect, you're allowed to continue operating, and we're not going to require any changes when it comes to that. So, a lot of those comments about how Mr. Mathison operated, in his staff's position, the potential for vesting rights, that was lost long before Mr. Mathison even took ownership of the project site. You know, we believe, based on the record, we asked, and I recommend you ask him again, what evidence do you have to show me, to show us that Purex, between 1947 and 1983, mined the site, had operations to mine? Are there pictures of stockpiles? Are there pictures of them doing anything? Do you have, the only evidence they've been able to give us is a letter from them to a buyer saying, "Oh yeah, I've been mining it," or "I've been operating." We don't know what that means, I don't have anything to go forward. So, I agree that Mr. Mathison, since he got his CUP, has always wanted to mine and has tried to continue. The only, based on, you know, based on the one comment, the one clarification I wanted to make is, you know, Mr. Colson said that they haven't been mining because of the county requiring permit since 2008. Well, what triggered all of this is that the existing adopted conditions of approval were not being followed by the project applicant. And again, they were going through, but that's what triggered the mining to stop, is that we said, "Hey, we need to get these things fixed." And they just never got fixed, to the point where that's when it led to. So, you know, unlike other jurisdictions that maybe have a CUP that expires, you know, our CUPs don't expire. A CUP, his CUP to mine has been good forever, will never stop unless he's not operating under those conditions or it's officially revoked, which is why we've come back and made the determination that, no, your existing CUP, we believe, is still active, provided you get back into compliance with your required conditions of approval. The only thing I note is, I know Mr. Hall, because again, there is a question about vested mining and everything, Mr. Hall has a specific response regarding part, why the county believes that the legal nonconforming use, which again, all the information we say, legal nonconforming, needed to be mined prior to the date before SMARA enacted.
Okay. And it was mined prior to SMARA.
Thank you, sir. If we have more questions, we'll come back to you. Thank you, appreciate it. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Let's, let's begin with a couple things that this matter's not about. This matter's not about abandonment. Not in any way, shape, or form is this matter about abandonment. Anything you've heard about abandonment, put it out of your head, does not matter here. This isn't about SEQA either. The determination of a vested right is not subject to SEQA. The reclamation plan after you have a vested right would be subject to SEQA. SEQA is not the issue today. The issue today is what happened in the era of DISCO, 1975. Was this mine actively being mined on the time that SMARA came into effect? That's the only question before us. The only question we need to worry about is, was it mined on that date? Now, I'm going to say on that date because that's really what the statute looks like, but there's a court case on this, it's the Hardestay case. We've heard about it today, it's the latest of the cases we've heard. We've heard about Hanson Brothers. Hanson Brothers is not a case to worry about. Hanson Brothers is the small portion being mined wanting to go into the bigger portion. Clearly, there's vesting there. It's not the issue we have here. We have a, a patent issue. We have an issue just like in Hardestay. In Hardestay, the question was, somebody had gotten a federal patent for a mine, wasn't mining it when SMARA came into effect, and wanted to have a vested right because they got their patent for their mine before SMARA. And the court said, to show he had a vested right to engage in mining on the property, Hardestay's briefing analyzes evidence of mining on the property before '76. However, Hardestay failed to prove any mining was occurring on or even reasonably before the date SMARA took effect. It's exactly what we have here. We have mining that occurred three decades before. Nothing that occurred in '76, nothing that even occurred for another, what, 18 years after '76 when SMARA comes in? This, this is the really part here that really jumps out. SMARA's grandfather provision does not extend to truly dormant mines. Not abandoned mines, dormant mines. That's what was occurring in 1975, based on the record, in this case that we have before us right now. And I should add a couple things that jump out on that, that point to what we have in the record. We have the SEQA applica, or the SEQA, the CUP application that they're now operating on. The CUP application shows that there was no mining occurring before this, before the CUP application going back to '47. There's no indication in this application for a CUP there was any mining going on. The NEG deck that was a part of that says, "This request is for a mining reclamation plan to conduct surface mining operations, open pit, to remove pumice, bentonite, and gold from a presently abandoned mine." That's the NEG deck from 1988. So, that's what we're looking at. What was occurring in 1975, and in this instance, we have no evidence that mining was occurring on, on that date or even reasonably close. The Hardestay case is on point, and therefore, there's no vesting that occurred. It's not about abandonment. He has a CUP. We're not, there's no abandonment today of the CUP. He can move forward and, and mine under his CUP, but he does not have a vested right for this mine based on these evidence. mine based on these evidence.
Thank you for your clarification. Appreciate it.
Can we respond to that?
I think our commission will conclude, and if we need to call you back for comment, we will come back.
Chairman, if I may, you should let them respond for due process consideration.
Okay.
And thank you. I'd like to claim the chair. Please go ahead and respond.
Okay, well, number one, a person shall be deemed to have vested rights if prior to January 1, '76, he or she has in good faith compliance on a permit, other authorization if a permit wasn't required. It doesn't say you have to have it and be doing it on this day. And can you imagine, January 1, '76, December 31, '75? Probably 90% of the quarries in the United States were closed, right? So, they wouldn't fit that vested requirement. And there's no place in Smara that it talks about dormancy. No place. And government can't take away your vested right.
Furthermore, we had that letter from Purex that said their intent was that they had mined intermittently over a period of time and wanted to continue to do so. County has no proof, there wasn't mining going on between the time that they alleged up to 1975, and it's up to them to prove that there wasn't any, and they have no proof of that.
Just one other clarification. This is James D. Corollis, also from EnviroMine. The Hardestay case isn't a true comparison to this site, which had been actively mined before Smara. The Hardestay case had never been actively mined. So, even if they had a patent, they had never started mining operations. They'd never started any kind of nonconforming use. This is not the case in this one. So, it's not a true comparison.
Thank you.
Can I just spell your last name for the record, please? I didn't catch it, I'm sorry.
It's a tough one. It's D-E-C-A-R-O-L-I-S.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corollis. Do I have any other commissioners with questions about this project?
Chairman, if I may add, I'd like to add one other thing. Quickly, as I said, it's not the day of. Hardestay says reasonably around that day. We'll give them a year or two on either side. We don't have that. We have decades of dormancy going on. And Hardestay case also says, "The burden to prove nonconforming use at the time Smara goes into effect is on the applicant, not the county." So, he has the burden. We haven't seen any evidence here. That's all I have.
I would contest that, that we've given plenty of proof they're mining on that site. 1923 through 1947, there was quite a lot, Purex Corporation after that. So, the thought that we haven't given any proof, I think we got the 50% there.
Thank you. Do I have any other questions from the commissioners? Chair has a question for the applicant. Mr. Matheson, should the termination of vesting not go your way tonight, do you have the intent of going to court to prove vesting as some of these other cases have?
Well, as I believe it's my right, if the board finds against me, I'll take it to the county supervisors, and failing that, then I will plan to follow it all the way. This is very personal with me. You guys, the county has, in effect, hurt me for the last 10 years by not allowing me to mine based on a condition of a permit being in place and my ability to mine, had I stepped up and corrected several things in the conditional use permit that they claim that I haven't done, which, by the way, is also misleading because I did do. There is an interim management plan in place and on file in their office that was filed. There is a reclamation plan that was approved. There is a financial assurance that's posted. And I'm very upset that it's cost me 10 years of production and income that I could have had had the county been straightforward with me, and they weren't.
And you...
And only because of this vesting process that I have initiated did this come to light. Otherwise, they would still be wanting me to apply for a new conditional use permit and go through an expensive EIR process.
And you alluded to a certain liability against the, you know, I've talked about the Sacramento case. What would that, if that came to pass, what would that be in this case in your estimation?
I don't know how to answer that exactly.
Okay, what that case was about was, the property owner claimed a loss in income because he was getting a royalty, and the mine operator, who was also Hardestay, was claiming that a loss of business. And so, they just multiplied that over, you know, like an 80-year mine plan, what that would cost them, and it came out to $105 million.
And has that been paid from the county, that county, to the operator?
No, I am an expert in that lawsuit. It went up to the U.S. appellate court, and they said, oh, this is a little generous, and they sent it back down. So, now they're working out a compromise.
So, there is implicit risk to the county if it doesn't go the right way in that regard? Is that what you're telling the commission here?
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, you work for the county, you show up to work in the morning, you get your paycheck, you go home, no sweat. But if you're in business for yourself, it's more complex than that. You've got to make the right decisions. You've got to make it happen. And Mr. Matheson's been trying to make it happen, but all these exceptions. So, somebody could sue us. Oh, well, you didn't, you know, you didn't put an outhouse out there, whatever. There's a million different things that come up that cause you problems and affect your business.
Understand that. I'm just worried about the risk to the county right now. I just wonder what that might be.
I don't know what the... I couldn't, I couldn't.
No, you had a case, that's why I was trying to ascertain that differential there, if there was any, from this particular permitting, or this, excuse me, vested right procedure.
Sure. Well, I think if this goes to Superior Court, it would just come right down to the law.
Okay.
And I don't think there'd be, I mean, Joe is just seeking his vested rights, so he can go back to mining without a whole lot of interference.
No, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner McGiffney, if I could just mention one thing here real quick, just based on that comment. So, to be clear, whatever decision your commission makes today is final, but would be subject to an approval. So, if a change of that decision had to come, someone would have to file an approval or an appeal, one way or the other, an appeal, not approval. This is a final approval. So, regardless of that, an appeal would have to be filed, and then the board would reconsider the potential project. Just regarding your case for litigation or whatever, and you asked Mr. Matheson specifically, I would note that anybody can litigate or sue a project on a decision, and I would note that your commission, in your staff report, has received comment letters expressing concerns regarding approval for vested mining rights as well, including groups that have litigated the county previously many times. So, I just wanted to make sure that there is a potential for litigation in anything, regardless of what decision is made tonight, which brings me to another comment. Should your commission, after your deliberation, if you do decide that you believe that the project qualifies for vesting and you wanted to go forward, I would have a revised recommendation for you that you would need to provide some information to me, but the project applicant, part of that would be that they require, and that they front, not front, that they sign an indemnification agreement so that they would cover the cost of any potential loss and given the concerns and challenges that are associated with this one. But again, based on all of that, it is still staff's determination and recommendation that we do not believe it qualifies based on what we have been provided tonight, and are recommending your commission deny the request.
No, I understand, and the county has staff lawyers and has legal advice that is in place. I was trying to think, see, and seek information if our applicant had that same kind of legal wherewithal, shall we say, because that's important, you know, decision in any business or anything else in that regard. So, and it sounded like another applicant did go through that process, so I wanted to be clear if this is something they were going to pursue, or if this is something that would be in their interest to pursue. So, I just wanted to get a feel for that as well, because we had mentioned in the past meeting about legal liability for the county, and I wanted to be clear on that one as well for the applicant. Thank you.
Chairman McGiffney, I have a question for the applicant.
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Matheson. Can you give me a little explanation on the background on why you're not wanting to pursue compliance of the CUP that you have right now?
Yes, because under vesting, I am no longer subject to sequoia, and that I still have to file a reclamation plan, which is on file. I still have to have a financial assurance. I still am subject to the same regulations, endangered species, air quality, water, but I don't have to comply with the, some of the nittinoid conditions that have been laid down as far as the conditional use permit. Furthermore, it's a property right that I'm seeking, and that's the essence of this whole thing, is a property right that I'm due, and it has been denied me for the last 10 years, and I'm looking for some remedy, and vesting gives me that remedy.
May I add something? And really, the compliance with the conditional use permit, there's a laundry list of conditions in there that you have to go out and get an agreement with Fish and Wildlife on the tortoise. You've got to get an agreement with Fish and Game on the Mojave ground squirrel. You've got to put up tortoise fence. You've got to do all this other stuff. And, you know, it's exhausting. There's a lot of stuff that goes into it, and, you know, I'm working on a project in Riverside County. I submitted everything to the Department of Fish and Game, and it's been 18 months, and I still don't have an answer on it. So, these things just take forever and forever. If you didn't have those conditions in there, you would still be required to comply with the Endangered Species Act. You'd still be required to get an air permit. You'd still be required to do stormwater. You have all those requirements that you have to do anyway. Get rid of those conditions and let him go operate. You know, if he runs over a tortoise, he's going to jail.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my comments for the applicant. I do want to just say for my fellow commissioners, you know, I am definitely very pro property rights in this situation, and I see some very glaring reasons that there is an intent here, including the taxes and compliance fees that were included in the presentation from the applicant. And I also think, you know, Commissioner Ashley, I hope you chime in, that this industry has a little bit different situation than other industries here in Kern, and if we, as a commission, have the opportunity to allow them to move through and to continue business, I'd like to see that.
Thank you, Ms. Skidmore. Any other comments from the commission discussion? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion at this point.
What about public comments?
Thank you. I did not understand we had public comments. If we do, please come forward. I'm sorry about that. Please state your name and spell your name for the record, and all comments have two minutes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Eileen Anderson. Do you need me to spell that? Okay. I'm with the Center for Biological Diversity, and we support the recommendation of your staff to deny the request for determination of vested mining rights for the Old Dutch Cleanser Mine. Our legal review under the legal framework for vested mining rights and case law is the basis for our support for the staff recommendation. The legal record is very clear. So, please support your staff's solid and well-researched recommendation and deny the request for determination of vested mining rights for the Old Dutch Cleanser Mine. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, anyone else? Please come to the mic if you have any other comments. And I'm sorry, it's dark in the back, so if there's any more, please come to the front. I apologize again.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Carolyn Neipris-Jones. I will spell that for you.
Thank you.
I'm with Red Rock Canyon Interpretive Association. The spelling of my last name is N-E-I-P-R-I-S-Jones. I wanted to, I know that legal representation had said that it was, or Mr. Matheson had said that the mine was idle because of permit issues, and I'd like to question that. I'm going to read from two of the letters. They're put in the addendum report. I know the addendum report only came out at 5:00 PM this evening, at least for the public. Our letter, we wrote, "We do not agree with Mr. Matheson when he said it was his intent to mine, which is what is needed to determine vested mining rights by his own admission. Mr. Matheson said he has been trying to make arrangements to sell the property for the past two years." I'm going to read from Mark Ball's letter, which is also in the addendum report. Mark's Ball wrote, "Herein I transfer a PDF copy of the letter I referenced dated March 10, 1999, sent from Mr. Matheson of the MatCon Corporation to State Park's Mojave Sector Superintendent Kathleen Franklin." And I'm quoting from the letter that was submitted in the addendum report from Mr. Matheson dated March 10, 1999. "The owners of MatCon Corporation wish to retire and would like to sell the entire 280-acre mining property to either a major mining or minerals producer that can fully develop the property, or to the Bureau of Land Management or State of California for its historical value, great location, and potential use as part of the Red Rock Canyon State Park system. As I stated, MatCon Corporation is very flexible as to the structure and type of sale, lease, or lease purchases. However, it is our firm intent to sell this property in 1999 so that we may retire to our farm near Paso Robles. Sincerely, Joseph Matheson." I'm out of time, so I can't address the other issues, but they are in the addendum report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Is there anyone else? Like, trying to see in the back here, I apologize again. If you come forward, if there's any more comments. Seeing none, and again, I yield the floor to any questions. I said I entertain motions. We have discussion, but we can move forward whatever way possible here.
Chairman, I actually, I do have one more question.
Okay, go, please, please.
I do have a question for the applicant, some clarification, if you don't mind. So, after you got the CUP approved in '89, I'm assuming you proceeded with mining operations after that time?
We did.
And how long did you mine?
22-plus years.
22-plus, until it was sold, correct?
Well, correct, and then it was recovered, and then it was mined intermittently, and was sold again, and then it was mined intermittently, and then it was sold again, and then recovered. At that point in time, the permit issue became an issue because the owner had not met some of the requirements. And so, for that following 10 years, I've been trying to work with the county to be able to get the CUP considered active, when indeed it was active, but we didn't know it, and apparently, they misled us and didn't share that with us, or possibly didn't know it themselves. And so, we basically wasted 10 years trying to come up with the ability to go back in there and mine, which we fully intend to do.
So, I do have a question for you. During those 22 years of processes, under the CUP conditions, were you meeting all the conditions of the CUP at that time, following the guidelines that are providing the conditions of approval that you did apply for?
Yes.
Okay, so you were mining and meeting all the conditions of approval, and you're saying it was until after the sale of the property, and the people that did own the property at that time were not following the conditions of the CUP?
That is correct.
That's correct. But the county has clarified that they are allowing you to proceed to mine as you were for the 22 years. You did have ownership of that property with the conditions that were applied to you, which you did mine the whole time of ownership, you had it. Now, you're saying that you do not, you wish to go with your vesting and not basically surpass the CUP conditions that were applied on you originally for those 22 years? Is that my understanding?
Yes, I want to exercise my property right, my vested property right, to be able to mine the Old Dutch Cleanser Mine the way it should be, subject to the laws I'd be subject to, and be exempted from the existing conditional use permit, which county has also indicated is the other option, but the preferred option, and the option that I'm here tonight to ask for, is my vested right as a property owner, mine owner, and somebody who's been mistreated by the county for a period of time.
Thank you for your clarification, and thank you, Chairman McGiffney. Another question for the applicant, I just would put a comment in, just saying that, and I myself also am a big believer in business, obviously, as a business owner here in Kern County.
County, and always promote business to do well and grow. As far as the commission, I do also look at, though, that, you know, we do put guidelines and play things like CUPs and zone modifications of nature that people can apply for and have to follow those guidelines. I think there's a path for the individual to continue mining, as per, this was approved back in '86, and for 22 years was ran under that conditions. And I feel that if, it would be difficult for us to overturn a CUP that was approved and say it's no longer valid, to go to a different route where the owner that currently had it was mining under those CUP conditions for 22-plus years. So in my, and my take is, I want the applicant to continue mining, but I believe it should be under the conditions that was originally implied under the CUP. Just wanted to make that clarification my part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ashley?
Yeah. Excuse me. Yeah, I think for me, it comes down to not what's happened since Mr. Mathewson has had the, had the mine and the, you know, back and forth. It really does go back to that evidence of activity from the 40s until you acquired it. And, you know, we rely very heavily, I'll state as well, that I'm a huge property rights proponent. I work in an industry that does not really often get to take the vested rights path and get to go through years, decades sometimes, for permits for our projects. So I understand the difficulty in that. Also, we rely heavily on staff's interpretation and our legal interpretation to make these decisions, because this is not something that we do as a day job every day. And I think there is issues with the pedigree of activity. And I think the law is in favor of the county to say that there isn't a solid case to show that there was active mining going on. And intermittent mining, you know, is a term of art, I think. You know, I saw some allusions to other pieces of ordinances that say three years, and I don't think we have that here in Kern County to say, what does intermittent mean? For me personally, I don't see, I don't see a continuous pattern of mining or intent to mine, really until Mr. Mathewson got it, which, and I fully respect his intents. I don't think that's the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. I did have a question for Mr. Hall, just a real quick question. What happened to the right if it was, apparently, there was some sort of right to mine before, let's say, 1947 or whenever? It seems like there was a right to mine, and then it's inside of a park. So, you know, does that take precedence? The state, does that, they say, hey, we take ownership of this land, or when it's abandoned, it becomes parkland? I mean, what happens to this land when we say we have true abandonment? And what happened to that right? Did it just vanish?
Well, I will say two things. One, we're not here about abandonment. That's not, nothing involved in this case about abandonment. This is about determining whether or not he has a vested right, or he has to follow typical standard zoning law right now. The vested right is like a trump card, if we were playing pinochle, to our standard zoning ordinances. And if you were mining effective that date, or as the court says, reasonably within that date, you can get a vested right, which would say, our ordinances have to consider his mining operation as being there. In other words, it's a grandfathered-in operation. That's what vesting does. So he can still mine, mine today under a CUP, but he doesn't have the right that he might have had if he had continued mining from '47 through continually. So that's what vesting is. It's not about taking anybody's rights, it's about whether or not they have to follow with current zoning. And he's done that with the first CUP. And if he'd followed the conditions of the CUP, he could move forward.
So I guess I'm trying to, in my own mind, clarify, and forgive me, I'm not a lawyer, but if there was a right at some point, that right would continue, I would think, for the next owner. And, but, that's why I mentioned abandonment, because when you abandon it, the right goes away, apparently, according to what you've read or what we've read here. So I'm trying to determine if there's no abandonment at issue, then when do the right, whatever right have, go away? What happened to it?
Well, again, the right becomes, put it this way, there was no right until it becomes operative. Think of it this way, zoning is conditions on your use of your land.
Yes.
He, at a point in time, and everybody had a point in time in 1920, in this county, do whatever they wanted, because we didn't have zoning codes. Once the zoning codes came in, your rights were modified effectively, depending on what zone area you were in and what planning commissions decided to zone your property, et cetera. What the vesting does is grandfather him in to a system that was in place prior to your zoning ordinance. And the problem we have in this instance is, he has nothing to show that he should get the grandfather. In other words, think of it this way, if in 1920, my property was used for a gas station, and at some point in time, they stopped putting the gas station there, and then it came in and was zoned as residential, we don't get to go back to 1920 and say, but it was a commercial gas station 40 years ago. I want a good gas station again. Well, no, it's now residential zoning. That's what the vesting does. The vesting is the trump card over the zoning. It provides a grandfather in. In fact, that's what the case said, the grandfather rights. It's grandfather rights to the zoning code.
And so I guess my question about the park, then, that has no bearing on it at all. The park is there, the land is there. It should have, I know there's people who talk about the park and everything, and I understand it. I'm pretty pro-park, if you know me. But I'm trying to figure, okay, how does this property fit into the context of that? Which has a higher, I guess, I guess, higher authority, so to speak? Does the state and the park, or does this property have the higher authority, so to speak?
Well, if he, it's not the issue here, but if the facts are lined up to where he has ownership of the property, or leased to the property that he's able to mine, that still fits in.
Okay.
It just has to follow certain conditions that he might not have to follow under vested. But even invested, he doesn't have to do SEQA, he does have to do SEQA on a reclamation plan under vested. It's less, I mean, if you don't, if you don't have, if you don't have vested rights and you want to mine, the SEQA is much broader. It's not just the reclamation plan, it's on the mine itself, and should you be taking the minerals out? That part of it goes away, and it's just the reclamation plan if he has vesting.
And I guess I ask that because some of the comments, and I'm reading here, right here, looked at it, it basically says, we don't want the mine to operate at all.
Yeah.
And that's not material, I guess, to this discussion, and I wanted to be clear that we're talking about as well, and what kind of trumps what, so to speak. And I appreciate your clarifying, that's very helpful to understanding what is going on here.
Chairman, if I may, we should be very clear. This matter before us today is about one issue and one issue only, is, does this mine have a vested right? Not whether the CUP is valid, not whether the conditions are following. Is it vested or is it not?
Okay. I appreciate that, Ms. Earl. Thank you, thank you very much. Do we have any other questions or clarifications from the commission? I will still entertain a motion if we like to continue on with this matter.
Chairman, if I may, I noticed one of the applicant, I should say, people with the applicant had raised their hand for due process consideration, because this is quasi-judicial. I would suggest, if he has something to say, you let him.
Oh, I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
Yay. I saw it out of the corner of my eye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I'll make this quick, I know we've been over this. He's a great example for non-conforming uses of having a house, or, sorry, a gas station, and changing it to a residential use, especially when it's then been zoned. You can't go back and change it to a gas station. That's why mining is such a different case, because mining goes on for long periods of time of inactivity, such as this site. And this site was never sold to someone other than mineral producers, and it was never used as any other use. It wasn't sold to Walmart, obviously not where it is, it wouldn't be, but it wasn't sold to some other kind of use and used in that way. So, great example, further proves our point. Thank you very much.
No, I appreciate it. That's why I asked a question about the park and other things, because there's other entities talking about these different things, and we're trying to clarify, what exactly do we need to do here, and what's being, what's at play? So I want to make that clear as well, in mine, as well as with the commission. So thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just clarify about the park situation. Again, this is patented land that dates back to when it was indeed patented. It was originally surrounded by Bureau of Land Management land. At some point, in the 80s or late, early 90s, the state park expanded and took over that property around us. We were totally, a privately-owned piece of property, totally surrounded by the park with a vested right, a roadway, entrance road across it into the mine. So the park really, again, and to also answer another question that was out there, we had offered it several times to state parks, because, again, the idea is that if they really want it, they would come up with the money to be able to buy it, and we'd be happy to sell it to them, if in fact, that was what they really wanted. But the problem is with the parks, A, they don't have any money, and secondly, they don't want you to do anything with it that they don't like, and mining is something they don't like. So it's a double whammy on us, and we've tried every can we can to work with the parks to include even a donation to the park, which has been four years in the, trying to get that done, and it still hasn't been resolved, because the two agencies can't get together on a memorandum of understanding. So, long story short, is that it's, we are a privately-owned property that is totally surrounded by the park, but it's not affected by the park.
No, I appreciate that, and that's why I wanted to make sure we understood the issue here, because there's other things I see from these correspondents that have nothing to do with this at all. And that's why I'm trying to make sure that we are on the right track and get all the, everything in process here, so we can vote properly, at least know what we're doing. So thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion coming from the commission? Well, if not, the chair will move to grant vesting rights to the applicant, so we can move on from this as needed.
Chairman McGiffney, sorry, if it is your intent to make a recommendation to authorize vested rights, I have to provide some comments, and I have to provide your recommendation so that you can have a clear request.
Sure. Sure. I just wanted to move this forward, so I had to make a motion.
So, before you make your motion, I would request that you provide staff direction as to how they meet the requirements for vested mining rights. So just your comments leading up to that.
Okay.
Secondly, if your recommendation is to allow for that, again, we do believe that the, given the comments we have, there is a potential concern for litigation. As was customary of all our projects, the project applicant provides indemnification agreements, so that they cover the cost over any litigation and not the county general fund. Secondly, as indicated by Mr. Hall, we also do believe that while a mining, invested mining right is not subject to SEQA, at some point when mining occurs, there's a possibility that you need to have a reclamation plan, which is subject to SEQA and subject to consideration in a formal hearing potentially. So, if you're moving this direction, my recommendation would be, after you provide the justification why you believe it qualifies for vested mining rights, to approve the vested mining rights request, not to become effective until the project proponent has signed and provided to the Planning and Natural Resources Department an indemnification agreement for the proposed request, and then adopt suggested findings, with mining not to be conducted until such time as a reclamation plan with appropriate review under California Environmental Quality Act is approved by the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department at a duly-notice public hearing, and adequate financial assurances for the reclamation plan is approved by the Kern County Public Works Department. The most of this recommendation came specifically from the previous recommendation that your commission made regarding vested mining rights at the Robertson sign. Most of that was taken word-for-word verbatim. So that would be my recommendation, if that is the direction you go.
Well, I would like to move forward on the vote, and to determine once and for all if we're going to move in that direction, and it's up to us to do that, and we're here tonight to do that. So that would be my motion, and I thank you for providing all the verbiage there to do so. Do we have a second?
Your motion is exactly as Mr. Murphy mentioned?
Chair has a motion on the floor to vote. Do we have a second to vote? Seeing no motion, do we have discussion for another motion here to adjudicate this
I will move to approve that we follow staff's recommendation to deny the vested rights and give the applicant a path forward to the conditional use permit that is still valid. He's going to have to go forward and do this reclamation plan, he's going to have to have all that, which is a SEQA trigger, if I'm not mistaken. So my motion would be to follow staff's recommendation.
Okay, so we have a motion to follow staff recommendation. Mr. Murphy, do you have anything to add to that, to clarify?
The only clarification I would have is, the existing CUP potentially has a reclamation plan that covers all of that. So we would need financial assurances, which he may have on file, we would verify that. But then we would work with the project applicant to make sure they're clear what conditions of approval are outstanding, that he would have to provide evidence that they met those conditions. So I just wanted to provide that clarification.
So the motion would be to deny the vested right and to continue with the CUP. Is that your intent, Mr. Murphy?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
I will second that motion with the clarification given by Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. Call the vote.
Two ayes, two noes, one absent, motion...
Does not pass.
Does not pass?
So, to provide some context on what options your commission has, this decision is affirmative, meaning there is no moving it forward, affirmative decision has to be made. Given the fact that we only have four commissioners, your commission can either continue to deliberate, you clearly can recommend a continuance or anything along those lines, but a decision has to be made, one way or the other. There is no path forward to have a 2-2 split and have anything continue. So based on that comment, your commission needs to continue to debate and come up with a recommendation that you can get at least three votes on.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I appreciate that. That is, that is the case, that is true. So do we have another motion or a motion to continue this issue? We may have any discussion we wish.
Chairman McGiffney, do you mind if I discuss a little bit?
We may do so, thank you.
Obviously, there was a split decision here between us. I am not against the idea of continuing. My only concern is being, as one of our fellow commissioners, as we well know, is very rarely to come in due to health conditions, and I would hate to see this thing being continued over, split vote over and over again, just delaying the process for the applicant and for the county on this particular matter. So with that, I will just add some comments on my side of why I, of the reason why I decided to follow the staff's recommendations and second that motion. It, again, big believer in property rights. I think that, I am not, by any means, a lawyer or decide legal guy that I can get off the recommendation, the communication that's given to you off tonight. And by our legal counsel, the county, I think this point has been made, that there's very minimal proof showing that any mining was happening sometime after '43, up to the time this mine was actually purchased, and in '75, when this, the law came in effect. So trying to prove that this mine was active or even dormant for some, anywhere it could be up to, it looks like almost a 20-year span before and 10 years after, it seems a pretty long, long span to be able to, to come across saying that it was just being dormant due to economic conditions. If it was a few years, I would definitely feel that that qualifies under the dormancy or the idea of following, you know, market trends. Obviously, this is a different type of a business versus mining versus what we normally see here in other type of, of, commercial type of applications. And also, the other reason why I feel that the CUP... And also, the other reason why I feel that the CUP should be upheld is, no matter what happened after 75, the applicant did purchase this property in sometime in 83, give or take a day or a year or so, but it was not being mined at the time. The CUP made clarification, again, given by our legal staff, that in the neg deck, clearly stated this mine was abandoned at the time and it was not being mined. I think, again, we have to go based upon the information that has been provided to us, and we should work off of, the information that's provided, not how we currently feel about a certain motion about what is right and wrong. I think it's, we have to go by what is provided, especially the age of this situation. And I think the other last point I will make is, the applicant, when he purchased the mine, it was not being mined, and he did go through the CUP process under the assumption that he will mine this based upon the conditions provided by the county. For 22 years, mining under those conditions of approval, did whatever he had to do to be profitable or not profitable, operate the business or be dormant, not be dormant, he didn't mine for 22-plus years until the time of sale. So I think if the applicant, for 22 years, was comfortable following those guidelines, operating his mine, and meeting the guidelines provided by this county at that time, I think it's a big ask to come back here now and say, "Well, I do not want to follow those guidelines any longer because I feel I have this right." So that is the reason why I am supporting staff's decision, because I feel, again, to wrap up, there wasn't enough information to really concrete prove that there was a vesting or mining happening within almost a decade on either side of that deadline. So I said, those are my comments, and I just wanted to put that out there for the commission to understand.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. Anyone else have any comments?
Sure. I'll echo, I'll echo Mr. George's comments. It, it's not about Mr. Matheson's intent, I think that is clear. I think his actions and mining there for the couple of decades that he did are quite clear. For me, it goes back to the proof that it was being operated prior to his, you know, acquisition of the mine, and, and it, again, I'm basing my opinion off our legal, legal opinion, that's what we do, that's what we have him for.
Thank you. I, I had a comment about that. I guess, to my mind, asking all these questions, I go, "Well, it's always been a mine, it's never been zoned anything else but a mine." I, you know, the right to operate it as a mine still should follow any, you know, legal purchase and transfer. You know, I, I guess the, the other laws came in between, and then there seems like, "Well, it's, is it really a mine? Is it abandoned?" Well, maybe, maybe not, but it still appears to be a mine, it was mined again. It seems like the applicant wants to mine further, so there's, there's more intent there to be a mine. And then there was that also part where he was told to do another CUP, even though this CUP is germane. You know, I, I find that a little troubling that we weren't able to make that clear to him years ago. Of course, we weren't probably all here doing that, but, doing this job, but I guess, you know, we need to adjudicate or, or correct a mistake perhaps. You know, I'm, I'm looking at it as a right, is probably right now, the best thing is the grandfather clause, I guess. But, you know, I want him to op, be able to operate the mine, I just don't know if that, if that vested right really went away, and I'm still having trouble trying to see how that vanished in all this, because it, to me, it's not, you don't have to, I don't see the, I kind of agree, I don't see, "Well, I have to operate this mine on January or December 31st, 1975 for it to be mined." Well, that, to me, that's not, now, a mine is assets in the ground, you're pulling them out when you need them, it's like a bank. To me, it's like a bank or a vault, you're pulling out what you need when you need it. It's not necessarily an operation like a power plant or other, like a food processing plant where you have to, you know, this is clearly something that is like a vault, you take out what you need when you need it. It's a totally different market, go-to-market than some other stuff, I get it. That's why I truly think that, you know, when, once you designate this a mine and the zoning never changed, well, why do the rights vanish? Why does this go away? Why is this, why does it not still operate as a mine the same way as before, based on that law which says, "Well, if it was a mine, it's a mine, therefore, it keeps going, anything new follows these rules." Okay. This wasn't new, so I, I'm really trying to understand and trying to figure out how we can get around some of the mistake, possible mistakes that were made, and also try to, you know, make it right for the applicant to say, "Yes, you can, you can operate." So I, I'm, I'm trying to figure that out here and make this work. I would like to make it work, but, but I still don't, I still believe this, it seems like this right exists, based upon what was said here, and like I said, well, they may have to go to court, I don't know, that may be an option, but I believe we should do something here to, you know, adjudicate the situation and make it go forward, and then, and then we can, you know, hopefully deal with the next step here, whatever that is.
Commissioner McGiffney, if I may, just because you had just...
Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
You stated "zoned for mining." I just want to be clear, it is not "zoned for mining," there is a conditional use permit. The use is allowed in, the property is zoned A1MH, which is limited agricultural, mobile home combining. So it's not that the property is zoned for mining, it's that it was being used for mine when the zoning or at that time, it had not been used since 1947, and then when zoning was established. So the property is actually zoned A1MH, which, again, under that zoning, if you obtain a conditional use permit, you would then be allowed to mine with your reclamation plan and everything along those lines.
No, thank you for clarifying that.
And the only other thing that I would just note is, my opinion is, staff was not wrong when we told him he needed a conditional use permit. Based on what we have presented, we believe that it never qualified for vesting, and he always needed a conditional use permit back when 89 existed and anytime thereafter from, from that perspective.
From the zoning perspective, right?
Correct.
Okay. That, that clarifies things, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, before that, before zoning, it was still a mine, and I'm saying, when does a mine not become a mine under, under these rules? And I'm trying to help figure, and help us figure out what we need to do here to correct or at least allow this operation to continue.
I'm on the same page as you, Chairman McGiffney, so I don't, I don't know what the, the solution is, if there's some type of middle ground here or maybe another suggestion from staff.
Madam, I don't have a suggestion to get to a middle ground. It happened once, a number of years ago, when it was a similar situation with this. One of you can change your decision, and you can change it on a vote to go one way or the other, knowing that all parties, the applicant, anybody else, has the ability to appeal a process and go forward. I'm not necessarily saying you should do that. I know one time, 12 years ago, I don't know what it was, we had four commissioners, it was a solar issue, one of the commissioners was exempted from providing any comments on it, one commissioner publicly stated, "I disagree with it, I'm going to change my vote so that it can move forward." They took a vote, that's what it was. I have no issue if someone does that, and if a project is approved or appealed, making sure that the staff report reflected that, that commissioner's decision, that he really didn't want to, but for purposes of moving things forward, they changed their vote from that as a perspective. Again, but that would only be the case if someone appealed that decision and then it went on to the board of supervisors. But, that's not a suggestion for middle ground, but that is something that could happen under your commission's decision-making authority.
But, to be, to be clear also, Mr. Murphy, he can, the applicant can still continue to follow CUP and go forward with mining, correct? There's nothing stopping him right now, that's correct, right?
Chairman McGiffney, no, I wrote him a letter, we've made a determination, the CUP has never been revoked by your commission, he had been paying those, he can continue mining, and when it comes to adherence to conditions, the burden is on him to show us, and we will be happy to work with him, to say, "Okay, what have you got? What's in place? Okay, we're looking at the adopted conditions of approval, you needed, did you get this? Let's go through," and we would walk through that particular process. So, yes, under that act, there is no decision, and again, that's, as Mr. Hall had indicated, that's not even before your commission today.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Chair, Chairman McGiffney, can I ask a question to, to both commissioners that are on this point? So, I think all four of us are understanding that we want him to mine. None of us want to take away his right to mine or him to do business in that sense. And I think a good clarification is made is, if conditions are met, he could start mining tomorrow, not almost keeping him from mining his property currently. I think, from my understanding, we talk about vested rights back, but at the end of the day, it really simply is, is either he wants to follow the conditions that are put on the CUP, or get rid of them and go through the vesting right, conditions which are a little more lenient. The question I have is, is, I think in anyone's best interest is that we want him to continue mining. My question to staff is this, due to the situation we're in, and I do agree earlier with the situation, that I, I do feel for the applicant that it's unfortunate that this wasn't, came to light prior, that he could operate his older CUP, was not able to operate. I think that is, is not a good situation at all, and I feel for you in that situation. But what I would ask to staff is, could he continue mining, and could we give him some leniency on, to get the conditions of approval caught up so he's not hindered from mining currently?
In response to your question, Commissioner Judge, no, we cannot. Further, in response to your comment about, this item was set for enforcement proceedings numerous times over the years. Mr. Matheson had the opportunity during these discussions to say, "Hey, I want to do this." Mr. Matheson, and through those discussions, said, "Oh, I'm going to process a new CUP." That is why no movement was to continue to work with him to get these conditions in place, or, there's, to make the statement that he hasn't had an opp, it's gone to enforcement proceedings, it came before commissions, decisions were made, it was either referred back for something, he had a discussion that said, "Oh, we'll let you continue mining once you get this condition in place," and then he went off and things along those lines. There have been ample opportunities to provide those, those avenues to go forward. So the only thing, as I would say, is, I believe it's a mischaracterization to say, for the past 10 years or anything along those lines, even before that, there hadn't been any, you know, we had gone to enforcement proceedings. The reason that we didn't move forward with anything back years ago is because the applicant said, "Well, I don't want to, I'm just going to go through a new CUP process," and started that, and that's why he turned in an application from that perspective too. So, there have been avenues in which this discussion has occurred over the years with other members of your commission and everything along those lines regarding this particular mindset.
I appreciate that clarification. So, with that, I think, the idea is, I think, if the conditions aren't met, he could start mining, and these conditions is something he has been used to and been doing for 22-plus years. So I, I feel that for us to say, "Well, because an applicant no longer wants to meet those conditions, that we should remove them," I think, I, I have a tough time supporting that type of decision. I think we should allow him to mine, and if he meets conditions like any other CUP that we've approved, he could start mining, you know, as soon as those conditions are met. So, I don't think any of us is trying to stop him from doing that. So I just wanted to clarify that, so anyhow.
Can I respond to staff comments?
Please do.
That's a, what he has indicated to you is a total misrepresentation. The only reason that we, that, that we filed a second CUP was because we were given no choice by the county, that was their only option that was offered to us. And the other option was, we went, went all the way through a mitigated negative declaration on the second CUP that we didn't need to do, but did, went through all the same studies, all the same reports, all, all the same investigations, we got to a mitigated negative declaration, and they decided at that point in time, and we needed an EIR. Arbitrarily, they pulled it out, we got to have an EIR, you can't go forward. That's what I objected to, and that's why we've installed this period, all this period of time, that they wanted $140,000 at the time to be able to start a, an EIR that we'd already gone through twice. Now, 10 years later, out of that, they tell me that we didn't need to do that at all, that our, our conditional use permit is still intact and in place, and so he's, it's a misrepresentation in the fact that it, on what has happened in the interim. And we have never been given an opportunity to come to the, to the commission before, or even suggested that it was an option that we had. So, again, we feel we've been mistreated by the county, and we're, we're looking for some redress, and, and vesting to us is, is the best course of action for us, and we'd like to get a decision on that if we can.
What part of the CUP is preventing you from operating now?
What I have to do now is I have to go back and I have to prove to county that each and every one of the conditions listed have been met, and that the burden is on me to prove to them that that has been done, which will take God knows how long it's going to take to prove them, and they'll kick it back, they'll, "Okay, we'll go back and forth three or four times," it can take another year to get this all done to, to their satisfaction. It's totally up to them to make that arbitrary decision as to whether I'm in compliance or not. Vesting eliminates that. I don't have to listen to county's arbitrary decisions on whether or not I'm in compliance.
Mr. Ashley?
Yeah, I would say, from my perspective, you've got a burden to hand. I mean, you've got a conditional use permit that's violated, and you've got conditions that you, that, they've been quantified, you know what that is. There, there are likely people in this room who do not agree, and I'm not saying myself they're not going to accept your ruling of vested rights, and they're going to, you're going to, before you walk out of here signing an indemnification agreement with the county, that puts you on a blank check. You sign your name, you don't know what the litigation's going to cost, you don't know how long it's going to take to get that back. Today, you have a burden hand. You have a permit that is violent as long as you can demonstrate compliance with that permit.
You know, there was a, staff was requiring a new conditional use permit, until I brought up the point that you've never revoked the old permit, staff can't do that unilaterally, they got to bring it back here and to revoke that. So what they did was come up with the easy way out, and you guys are following it. "Oh, you still got that conditional use permit, you can still do it." "Oh yeah, it might take you two years to get all those conditions complied, but you, you can still do it." Ain't right, man.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Hall.
The, the identification that the current CUP is still effective was done by me in our office after the last hearing. It wasn't done by the applicant. It was done in, by me in our office because I noticed in the record, there was not a revocation of the CUP. He didn't want to follow the conditions of the previous CUP. We get that, he can ask for a new CUP then, and ask for new conditions on the CUP. But to hear now that he brought that up is quite troublesome when that occurred in my office, and I'm the one that mentioned, "We can still move forward on the original CUP." Now, he, you asked the question, "What condition in that CUP does he not like?" I, I don't know, and I don't need to know, because when, the question I'm presented here legally, I've got blinders on. I look at the, at the Hardestay case, Hardestay case says, "Were you mining at or reasonably around the time of Samara coming into effect to give you grandfather rights?" We do not have a record on that here, and he can't create a record after this hearing. This hearing, if it goes to court, will be based on the record presented today, and that's what we have. This does not stop him from mining, he still has the ability to mine. If he doesn't like his current CUP, he can ask for a new one, he can ask for changes to his current one. And it's not county staff that determine that, it's this board. This board today is, we're going to have another CUP come forward. You determine the conditions, not staff. So, that's something to think about. This isn't about whether or not he gets to mine, this is about whether or not he has any conditions on it with vested, which is wide open, or whether or not the county is able to put reasonable conditions that your board approves on his mining. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Do we have any additional comments or questions?
Earlier, Mr. Murphy had put some additional conditions on your motion, Chairman McGiffney, on, when you asked to consider vested mining rights. Mr. Murphy, can you reread those again?
Sure. So it was to approve the vested mining rights request, not to become effective until the project proponent has signed and provided to the Planning and Natural Resources Department an indemnification agreement for the proposed request, and adopt suggest findings with mining not to be conducted until such time as a reclamation plan with approved review under the California Environmental Quality Act is approved by the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department at a duly noticed public hearing and adequate financial assurances for the reclamation plan is approved by the Kern County Public Works Department. And again, that is the almost verbatim same language that your commission approved when the Robertson's mine was considered as well, in which Mr. Coulson was also representative on, and which they were comfortable with how that, that recommendation, recommendation read, and so...
But this applicant is not satisfied with that because it's an arbitrary condition thrown on top of a vesting. They've talked about a reclamation plan that is subject to CEQA. Vesting does not require me to be subject to CEQA.
That, we have a reclamation plan, so long as we don't mine outside of our reclamation pad boundaries, we don't need to get a new one.
Yes, Mr. Hall.
I am pulling directly from cases provided by the applicant. City of Yukaya, I believe, is, is the case I'm wanting to look at right now, which shows that, in fact, the reclamation plan is subject to CEQA?
I didn't, I didn't say that, that it wasn't. I said, "We have a reclamation plan, we don't have to get a new one if we stay within the boundaries of that reclamation plan. If we want to expand the mining operation within the property, the vested property..." the mining operation within the property, the vested property, then yes, we have to get a reclamation plan, and it is subject to SEQA.
Thank you, sir.
And that would be the difference here. Under vesting, he's able to expand without coming back to the board for a CUP or anything else.
Right. And that's what I understand that part of it to be. You know, and I still see that there is, to me, adequate regulation, so to speak, on the mining operation. It has to follow the rules and procedures of mining in general, as well as the law, federal, state, as well. That's why I liked, actually, what Mr. Murphy put together for helping me with that motion. As I say that, it gives him these degrees to the vesting right, and then still has some, it's not free-for-all. It's still, hey, we're still following all the laws and everything else we'd have to follow with the CUP. It just makes it less, I guess, less restrictive in that regard. And like I said, I, you know, I see the vesting maybe a little different, because I see the 50-50 thing, sort of, and I'm like, well, it looks like a mine, you know, it's kind of like the duck, looks like a duck, looks like a mine, still seems to be a mine. And whether you have equipment there or not, equipment can be moved on and off site. So I don't say, just because of your equipment, there are not, no equipment, it's not a mine, or it shouldn't be a mine. That's irrelevant to me. But, you know, again, it's a different business model. It's like a vault of stuff you have, and you pull it out when you need it. So I, you know, it's a different type of operational condition. So, you know, that's why I consider that to be the least, I mean, to me, I don't think the right's gone away, but again, there's different, precedent would be adjudicated in court, perhaps, in this case, I don't know, to say one way or the other. But what I can tell, there seems to be that, and if we have adequate regulation on it, whether the park, people like the park like it or not, it's still a mine, and it was there before they were. And to me, that makes, that's a lot. That makes, you know, that's kind of the rub here, that that mine was there first. And we see mining, and we see historically, that's what it is, until it isn't, to me, it's a mine. So that's why I still think the position I have is adequate and the most helpful. But I guess there's risk to you, the applicant, as well, if that, you know, it could go to court either way, I guess, and it could go against you, too, or you could be served as well. You know, so I just, I just know there's risk either way, but I think it seems like you're willing to take that risk. And I don't see any problem with operating a mine in the way it had been operated in the past, you know, the more distant past, but also, it still seems that it was always a mine to begin with.
Mr. Matheson, can I ask your opinion on moving forward? So you're obviously watching our dialogue. We're stuck. And there's a few options that have already been presented. We can continue this. Someone could change their vote. Do you have any thoughts on what you'd like to see?
Well, I'd like to have a positive vesting determination is what I'd like to see. But I say, I'm not, I'm trying to get along with the county. I've always tried to get along with the county, and I'm trying to do the best thing I can to make it all work for us. But I don't want to be saddled with unreasonable conditions, and I don't want to be saddled with the treatment I've got from the county in the past on review of, or arbitrary conditions laid on me, or arbitrary review, or, how do I say it, arbitrary interpretation of conditions. And that's my concern, is that whereas if I continue, go back to try to prove to county that I'm in compliance with all of these conditions that currently exist, that they're going to hamstring me for another year, year and a half, jumping through hoops to be able to satisfy them. And that's my big concern, because of the way I have been treated in the past.
Mr. Murphy, is there any way for us to engage on that CUP process as far as the compliance component? Or is it because they already have their own CUP that's already in place?
They have their own CUP that's already in place. And, I mean, there's a number of condition, one condition, just to kind of, again, we, I have not gone through every single one to see how we have it and anything along those lines. I kind of scanned them. But like, one condition, actually, is outside of our control, is they need to get a 1081 take permit from the state to get a desert tortoise, or they have to do some other tortoise, desert tortoise fencing to protect where that is, which still may require a combination with the state. And so I actually think that the issues he has to deal with with us are going to be very straightforward. I think there are other things that he will be dealing with, that he'll have to go through, and to kind of manage to help show us, yep, I can meet that provision, I've done that, and anything along those lines. I mean, clearly, your commission has provided direction to staff. You want to allow him to mine. And I have, if that's the case, I have an approved CUP, and it's my job to then make sure that I'm implementing the condition and getting him forward to the mining as best he can. So the concern about staff not moving forward and trying to process his CUP, absolutely, we've not to process CUP, but implement his conditions, I have no problem, as soon as we're done with this, going through and saying, okay, here's what we got, here's what our records are, how can you show it to me? You know, we have projects with 200 mitigation measures. They get reviewed and signed off on very quickly, and we kind of go through this process. So I don't think it's very difficult, at least with the stuff we have to go through in the county. There may be some conditions in there that require coordination with the state and things that actually might take a little bit more time, which would be subject regardless of whether or not he has a CUP, because there's still things that go forward from that aspect of anyway. So I don't believe that it would be difficult to move forward once we kind of go through this. And clearly, I would have direction that your commission says that he hasn't approved CUP, and you've recommitted that, and we're moving forward. So, I mean, that would be my response to that question.
See, once again, that's misleading, because the example he brought up, for example, of desert tortoise protection and mitigation, those things were all negotiated back in the original CUP, and bought off bond by the Fish and Wildlife Commission at that time. We had to put up some, desert tortoise fencing was a solution to that. So if we've gone back and have to look at those things now with a new interpretation, or have to prove to them that we have some kind of other, or current agreement with fish and wildlife, that could all change and create another obstacle for us to be able to move forward with mining. We've experienced that on other mines right now, and which is part of the reason I'm, in a donation process with the state parks for part of the Old Dutch Cleanser Mine to be able to satisfy mitigation lands on another mine project. I don't have that with the Old Dutch Cleanser Mine, but if we reactivate, and the county forces, enforces that particular item, ignoring what we have done in the past, and what agreements we had in the past, that can create a lot of grief for us, and a whole new set of conditions that I've got to comply with that we didn't currently have to comply with, because we'd already resolved those issues back 20 years ago. Those, that's my concern, is the interpretation of the conditions and how they apply, and how county looks at them today on a conditional use permit that was settled and resolved 20 years ago. And if they're looking at it with today's eyes versus those that were 20 years ago, things could change over which I have no control, and I've got to comply with, and I didn't have to comply with then.
Yeah, but you're also facing a board up here, right, that's stuck. So my issue is, you have two and two right now. And so you, no matter what, you're not going to probably be satisfied with the outcome this evening, right? Because it sounds like, if we even pass considering vesting rights, there's additional implications that are going to come forward to you. So I'm looking to you to give us a little direction on, all the paths are going to be a little jagged. Which jagged path do you want to take? Or do you want to kick it down the road? Hopefully, our fifth commissioner will be well, and by then, hopefully, state law won't continue to harm your industry.
That's a tough question to ask me at this moment, because I'm fairly emotional about the whole situation. And I was hoping for a clear-cut vote one way or the other that would make it somewhat easier. And I appreciate the two of you that support the property rights and vesting rights, and which is admirable, and in fact, probably the correct answer. On the other hand, if I have some insurances where the conditional use permit that was agreed to 20 years ago is not going to, in fact, change or be interpreted differently, and that county staff will go out of their way to make this all a painless process, then I could possibly live with that conditional use permit. But barring that, I need a decision, and I favor the vesting, because I'm free of reinterpretations of old agreements and old decisions that were made 20 years ago by the county planning staff at that time.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Mm-hmm.
I finally have some sort of middle ground.
Okay.
While your commission doesn't necessarily weigh in and have the authority to weigh in on some of that interpretation on the conditions and everything along those lines, clearly, your commission oversees zoning, planning-related, in terms of cases that come to you. Earlier on this agenda, you had commission member announcements, you have opportunities to ask questions, things along those lines. You are welcome to, at any particular time, say, Mr. Murphy, would you be willing at your next meeting to provide a summary as to where we are at in the status with the existing implementation of conditions of approval, at which time, next planning commission, if that is your desire? I can provide a full presentation. I've met with Mr. Matheson on this day, here's where we have, and we can, I can update you, I can give you feedback. So that if the concern is, we're not moving forward, there is a pathway for you to ask me, Craig, can I get a status update? And I can provide you, we've reviewed the conditions, these are three that we still are needing to work out, we've asked Mr. Matheson, whatever the case may be. So again, that is something that your commission could continue to ask me. You could ask me to give you an update every two weeks, every month. I mean, there is opportunity for that discussion or request as well.
Mr. Matheson, would that transparency assist you at all in your current CUP process?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
I think that's a reasonable step to take, and be able to see what the impediments are going to be, and what problems we're going to have in terms of interpretation of conditions, and which ones they're going to have to kind of ruggle on unfavorably, and then bring that back to you folks, and readdress this thing. I have no problem with that.
Okay, then let me take a stab at a motion with this commission. So I'm going to motion to deny the vesting mineral rights, and ask staff to engage with the current conditional use permit with MatCon Corporation. Is that sufficient enough, Mr. Murphy?
Commissioner Skidmore, through the chair. Generally, yes. I guess what my request would be, I'm going to make sure I can find exactly how I have the language specified. I would request that you leave the condition as it reads all the way through, and then if you want to add language, I would request that at the end, you add some sort of language regarding continual, meet with the project applicant to discuss the existing conditions, and report back to staff on a bi-monthly or basis, or upon request, or something along those lines. But to make it clear from the overall recommendation, to get the statements in that we need. I think you should leave the existing recommendation as it is, and then just add language at the end.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Matheson?
I'm not abandoning vesting. I'm merely saying that I'm, what I agree to would be the, seeing how county is going to interpret the existing conditional use permit, and we can continue this, and readdress it at another time post-foufally when we have a full quorum. But I'm not just objecting, I'm not just casting vesting aside out of hand, because I don't think that I need, I don't think that I deserve that. I think I deserve an option to be, to look at what we're going to be required if I continue with the existing conditional use permit versus vesting.
Can the applicant come back at any time and ask for vesting again? Or once we deny it, that's it for...
Madam, or Commissioner Skidmore, so two things. One, if you do deny it, if he would still like to have vesting, Mr. Matheson can pay $540 and appeal the decision to the board. So there is a pathway forward. If he decides not to appeal it, you know, generally speaking, I can tell you when it comes to land use cases, like if someone asks for a change in zoning, or things along those lines, and the request is denied, circumstances have to either change, or at least a year has gone by before any additional request would come in to reconsider that. But again, if you recommend denial, Mr. Matheson has a clear path forward. If he disagrees with that determination, he can file an appeal, and then the Board of Supervisors would consider the request.
How quickly does that appeal go to the Board of Supervisors?
Generally, we try to do it within a month, is kind of what the zoning ordinance specifies, depending on what the board has scheduled. And, you know, there may be some things that kind of have to get that set. But no, we would set it for an appeal at, you know, at a available time that we can.
Can he wait a few months to see how the progress goes before an appeal comes to the board?
He cannot. An appeal has to be done within 14 days from it, including the date of the hearing decision.
Mr. Murphy, it's a question, if we decided to continue the discussion here, but still go through the idea that we're going to get an update on the CUP, so that thus not eliminating the option of going, for him being able to get vesting, would that work in terms of, you know, getting the information we like, and then seeing if there's a future, in the future, saying, yeah, you know, we want to go, we definitely want to go this way?
Chair, sorry, Chairman McGiffney, as Mr. Hall has clearly stated, the item before your commission has nothing to do with CUPs. Like, you, your commission has to make a decision on vested mining rights. That is the application before you, that is the request before you, that is the decision you have to make. This discussion, you know, while it's relevant to Mr. Matheson in general, it is getting way convoluted in terms of, you have an applicant that says, I think I qualify for vested mining rights, here's what I think the law is. You have county staff that has reviewed it, and we think this is what we think the law is, we are recommending no. The item before your commission is still a very straightforward question that just has to be determined. All of this other stuff is things that, I mean, to answer your question, I, to bring it back, that doesn't help to answer the question that you have before you right now. I mean, I'd be happy to provide additional comments, but he does have a, he does have a active CUP. That letter has already been provided to him, that is the determination of staff. So regardless of the decision your commission makes on vested mining rights, staff will be working for Mr. Math, with Mr. Matheson if he wants to move forward as it is.
And I guess, Mike, since we're not in a majority here, I was just saying, if we were able to continue this, just because we can't make a decision right now, and it's getting late, and I was just looking at it as a possible option, because I'm not sure we're ready to throw in the towel on this one.
Well, Chairman McGiffney, hold on one second. I'm going to, I'm going to keep my motion, and I'm going to tell you this, Mr. Matheson. I would love for the outcome to be what you wanted this evening, but the reality is before you. And I will do my best to make sure that if you're not heard from the staff, to bring this back to the board at any meeting that you need. Okay? So I will give you that. But I'm going to hold the motion that I already stated, with the background that Mr. Murphy stated on the bringing back updates on your conditional use permit progress on a monthly basis. And if we need to go more than that, I'm happy to do that. But I will keep my motion on staff's recommendation.
I will second that motion.
Could you please reread the motion, so I understand what we're voting for?
It's based off of staff's...
Your commission.
Go ahead.
Deny the request for determination of vested mining rights, and require submittal of documentation verifying that compliance has been achieved with all the adopted conditions of approval under CUP 1, MAP 113, and adequate financial assurances for such reclamation plan approved by the Kern County Public Works Department prior to the commencement of any mining activity on site. Staff is, direction is further provided by this commission, requesting staff report back on a monthly basis regarding updates as to compliance issues with Conditional Use Permit 1, MAP 113.
Do I have a second?
I have, cast the second.
Okay, thank you.
Three acts, three acts, three acts, one known, one absent. Vote for carriers as running to the record by staff.
For projects where the planning commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. An appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms available at the department and on the department website. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of the hearing. If no appeal is received, the action of your commission is final.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Moving on to, I believe, item number four. Moving on to, I believe, item number four.
Hi, my name is Jason Horn, HO Warren.
Excuse me, sir. We haven't called for you yet, I'm sorry.
Chairman McGiffney, Ms. Jeanette Simon is coming up, she will make the staff presentation.
Thank you. We'll be back at 10 o'clock. Thank you.
I needed some water because it's hard to talk with the mask on. Oh, thank you. Thanks Katrina.
I knew it was going to be this long, that's why I was trying to...
We'll be back at 10 o'clock. Thank you. We'll be back at 10 o'clock. I knew it was going to be this long, that's why I was trying to...
The project before you this evening, we're going to start with CUP 140 Map 101. This is, the applicant is Andrew Coombs, excuse me, by DeWalt Corporation. The, and sorry, let me go back just a quick second. Thank you Chair McGiffney and good evening commissioners, or good night, I should say probably.
Good evening to you as well. And ladies, take all the time you need, we are totally fine.
Thank you. The project before you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit to allow private soccer fields, futile courts, storage building, a restroom and associated parking located on the northwest corner of Red Avenue and Hagaman Road. The proposed project site is a 20-acre site with a boundary across two parcels that equal an approximate 40 acres. Need to get my pointer. So this is, these are the two parcels right here and this is the parcel that is proposed this evening. This site is designated RIA, which is intensive agriculture by the Western Rosedale specific plan and has a zone classification of A, exclusive agriculture. The project site is currently developed with a grass field and compacted dirt parking lot, all of which is enclosed by a screened chain link fence. Access to the site is provided by Hagaman Road. The immediate surrounding area is farmland with residential subdivisions in the vicinity, excuse me. And this was given a provisional approval by the planning director in 2018 for the site to be used as private soccer fields for practices while processing the conditional use permit. And at this time, the use of the area is dedicated to the private soccer practices Monday through Friday in the evening during the hours of 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. The applicant is requesting an approval of a conditional use permit to allow the private soccer fields, futile courts, a storage building as an accessory to the proposed development and parking areas. The private practice on the site would be overseen by an instruction of qualified trainers and coaches where local youth teams would utilize the fields to strengthen their talents and abilities throughout the year. The applicant has indicated tournaments would not be taking place for viewing public. I'm just going to pull up a site plan that we have here. I have a close-up version if we have to get into that. During the weekend, the site would be used for skirmishes, group trainings and with the proposed use of up to 50 players at one time. During the year, coach arrival would be as early as 5:00 p.m. while parents and players arriving between the hours of 5:20 and 5:30 p.m. Practices would end at 8:30 and the area would be completely vacated and closed by 9:00 p.m. Per the site plans, the proposal includes two soccer fields with four smaller sized futile courts. The applicant states there will not be amplified music or sound and only the portable light towers would be on site. Additionally, the application did not include food or vending services as part of this proposal. A 10,000 square foot, there we go, right here, a single-story storage building is shown on plans that would store mowers, sports supplies and miscellaneous equipment. The proposed storage building will also include plumbing for restrooms. Additionally, a standalone restroom facility is designed to be on the northwest part of the soccer fields near the northern parking area. As proposed, an onsite private water well will continue to be used for irrigation purposes only and two septic systems for plumbing needs of the restroom facilities is proposed at this time. The perimeter of the site currently contains a privacy slatted chain link fence that includes a gate that will be closed and locked when the site is not in use. Staff has received comments during the appropriate notification period from several departments including water, sewer and road requirements. The applicant has been made aware of these requirements. Staff has not at this time received any opposition in terms of this project. Through staff evaluation, the project appears to meet all the bases of approval for the conditional use permits. Staff is recommending the parking areas be paved with pathways intermingled for pedestrians to find easier pathways to the fields. The site has been designed with 297 parking spaces, which is more than the minimum requirement of 160. Landscaping is being provided within the parking area and trees shown around the perimeter of the fields. Trash collection points will be added throughout the site to ensure all trash is collected. Along with water and sewer requirements, Public Works has included conditions related to the dedication of vehicular rights along Red Avenue. And as required, there will only be one ingress and egress point from the project site via Hagaman Road. Furthermore, the site will be secure while the fields are not in use as the fields are not open to the public. The screened fencing surrounding the perimeter of the fields will be closed and locked when the fields are not in use. Your commission has received an addendum staff report this evening that outlines conversations that staff had with the applicant regarding clarifications for condition number two, letters A and C. These clarifications explains there are leagues that play on the fields and the applicant did not want confusion with that terminology. In addition, the applicant, after some thought, found that Sundays would be advantageous for the teams that use the field and requested several Sundays a year be used. Staff concurred with the clarification in the names of the type of teams using the fields. Therefore, condition 2A has been amended for consideration to read as such. Fields shall be utilized for private practices only, tournaments are not allowed. And condition 2C will be read to say Saturday and Sunday operating hours from 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. and/or 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And finally, staff has included a new condition, 4K, that states the applicant shall notify ... And as required, there will only be one ingress and egress point from the project site via Hagaman Road. Furthermore, the site will be secure while the fields are not in use as the fields are not open to the public. The screened fencing surrounding the perimeter of the fields will be closed and locked when the fields are not in use. Your commission has received an addendum staff report this evening that outlines conversations that staff had with the applicant regarding clarifications for condition number two, letters A and C. These clarifications explains there are leagues that play on the fields, and the applicant did not want confusion with that terminology. In addition, the applicant, after some thought, found that Sundays would be advantageous for the teams that use the field and requested several Sundays a year be used. Staff concurred with the clarification in the names of the type of teams using the fields. Therefore, condition 2A has been amended for consideration to read as such. Fields shall be utilized for private practices only, tournaments are not allowed. And condition 2C will be read to say Saturday and Sunday operating hours from 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. and/or 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And finally, staff has included a new condition, 4K, that states the applicant shall notify SoCal Gas prior to any construction regarding improvements that are proposed near the SoCal Gas pipeline and within SoCal Gas easements, including but not limited to potholing. This will ensure that any construction or grading done in the area is conducted safely. With the recommended and revised conditions of approval, the project will be developed in accordance with the county standards and continues to demonstrate that the project is sufficient and will ensure the health, safety and welfare of the public or to the property and residents in the vicinity. Therefore, it is the department recommendation to approve conditional use permit as requested in accordance with the revised recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings. Thank you, that concludes staff's presentation.
And thank you, Ms. Simons. Is the applicant here this evening?
Yes.
Would you like to speak at this point?
Well, I think there was some clarity on the weekend.
Well, please come forward if you want to speak to the board or the commission, thank you.
I think there was some confusion on the weekend, we just want to make sure that there was clarity on the timing. Yes. The weekend, it's on Saturday, Sunday, 8:30 to 12, not 5:00 to 9:00.
Just the mornings only, is that correct?
On the weekend, yes, during the week it's 5:30 to 9:00 and then, yeah, that's it. Just on the weekends, it's in the mornings, just not in the afternoon.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, could you please state, sir, could you please state your name?
Andrew Coombs.
Andrew, thank you, I wanted to be sure who you were.
And this is the vice president of the soccer club that practices out there, so she can answer some more questions on the timing.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Dana Hamilton. Just to further clarify the time, it would be during the day of the weekends. So from 8:00 in the morning until before dark. So it might go into the afternoon, yes. So it's the lady, when she read it, she read 8:00 to noon or 5:00 to 9:00 p.m.
So which is it?
It's from 8:00 in the morning until 5:00.
Eight to five?
Yeah.
Thank you.
On the weekends.
On the weekends, eight to five.
Yes, whereas during the week, it's in the evening. It's from 5:00 to, yeah, we've, we're gone by 8:30, 9:00 o'clock at the latest.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, not at the moment.
Is there anyone who would like to speak about this project that's not the applicant?
I would.
Please come forward.
My name is Jason Horne, H-O-R-N. I'm a resident within less than a mile of this existing facility. What they're not telling you is that they're currently have six soccer fields, and they park two row deep in his application, 600 by 600 feet. So if you did 10-foot parking stalls, that's, you know, a lot, 120 cars. The traffic is horrendous, and it's, like he said, it's down Hagaman. Well, I live off Hagaman, it's difficult to get in and out of the neighborhood at the peak times the traffic is flowing in and out. Secondly, Rudd is in dismay. The road is in, has been repaired more than once, but the heavy traffic is consistently tearing it up. The use of light towers against Kern County's dark skies ordinance. These light towers, as you see them operating on the freeway, you drive by on the freeway, they blind you because they're not aimed, they need to be very tall and aim down onto the said property. So as you're coming down Rudd, the dirt from their parking lot and the bright lights makes it difficult to see, and there's children. It's a soccer park, and it's a 40 mile an hour road, it's not a 25 mile an hour road like you would be in front of a park. I have no opposition to this park, but I feel that the roads need to be improved and they need to be honest. Are they really going to build this, or are we going to deal with six grass soccer fields with light towers and blue houses for the next 10 years? Because that's what we feel they're doing, because he wasn't going to do anything until we've called code compliance on numerous times and found out through planning department that maybe some people who work for Kern County are in fact kids are playing at this park and there, people have looked the other direction for them. So if they're going to build the park, great, but stop operations that are illegal currently because a soccer park is not a legal operation in an ag zone. And go through the proper, get your CUP, build your project and then commence practicing. But right now, this is their window to continue six soccer parks or six soccer fields at a park in a residential neighborhood that doesn't meet the current standards. And if CUP is to proceed, portable light towers is not an approvable, or it's not a legal method in Kern County. They have standards called dark skies, and they're there for a reason, this is an obvious reason. That's, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horne. Is anyone else?
I can answer a question for you real quick. My name's Adam Stubbs with DeWalt Corporation. Under the current zoning that he has, it's ag, and you can apply to use a park under ag conditions. We did have a letter written that we can continue operating the way that we had been. The only reason we have not been able to do anything is because, like we said, we filed for this in 2018. 2019, it didn't go through, it got pushed around, all of a sudden COVID hit. Now here we are in 2022 in June, and we have finally been able to come up here. So that's the reason that the park has not done anything going forward. We have talked with air commissions about any type of dirt in the air, anything like that. We've made accommodations for that, we wet the fields every night before they park so that dust and traffic track out as minimal. We've also looked into using pistachio shells at the recommendation of the airboard to put down until we can try to get into a paving situation or any type of construction. So that's where we're at, that's where things have not done. The illustration that you see with the two fields, that's our ultimate goal, but can we fit smaller ones in there for little kids to play because they're only 4v4 or 8v8, whatever it is? Yes, we can fit a few more fields in there to do it. That would be a college team right there for that. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify a few things for you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I speak one more time to clarify on the letter that they had?
Please come up.
They did have approval, like I mentioned, but their approval didn't allow them to use the lights. And that was our first complaint, was the lights. So this was a two-year process, 2018, before COVID, COVID was 2020. So like I said, we don't mind the park, but it's do it right. Build the road, stop what you're doing now. Fix the roads.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's Adam again here. I do want to say though, thank you for that besting, interesting case there as a land surveyor. I would have had to spend $2,000 to learn what I did. Anyways, the roads are for, are county purpose roads, that is a county road. So that's the counties maintaining the Rudd Avenue there. Hagaman is also a county road, that's the county's responsibility to maintain that road. We've actually worked with the county, the county, the map that you see there is the West Beltway that's going to go through there. That's basically a freeway. So I believe that if the county is willing to approve a higher traffic road going through there and also approve our sports park with children there, I think that what we're doing right now is safe. Nobody's coming in there, nobody's speeding down the road. The light towers are all faced downward and inward towards the property. Where Mr. Horne here lives is probably half mile away from the site within a residential area. So for the light towers to come and absolutely mess with him over there, that doesn't happen. I drive my son out there all the time, coming down Rudd, it's perfectly fine, you can see. The county's recently repaved it, and now they're repaving Rudd all the way down to north, I believe. So the roads are getting improved, it's approved on the east side. Once the West Beltway comes through, it'll be approved on the west side. That's it.
Thank you.
Just one more comment. Yeah, I agree with everything he said, that they're going to improve the road and make it wider. The children there, when this is built, will be safer, the way it is now is not. The way it is now, it's a danger because 40 mile an hour road, it's dirt, and the light towers do shine in the road. They point them at the entrance so that people can see where the gates are to come in because it's dark, we live out in the county, on a rural road, it's dark. So they point them out to the entrances where it's least safe. And then the traffic coming in and out of the park is atrocious because if you're driving down Rudd, they just kind of try to jump out there because they quote unquote, know you're not going to hit them, is what it feels like. There, it's difficult.
Thank you.
This will not be the best thing you're hearing, I promise you, I promise you. And thanks for your comments, but yeah, the staff, the staff has, does have, they did recommend when we first applied for this, that we did a traffic study. We actually hired a company to do a traffic study, and staff should have that report. It was back in 2019, so if they, if they don't have it, let me know, I've still got it on file, I can get it to them. That's not a problem, but they did not find any high-traffic reasoning to say we had to do a signal, that we had to do anything of that nature, so. And we do agree, coming in, it's a little busy, but then it mellows out, and then as we leave, it is a little bit busy. But as far as we've been out there, there has never been an accident, we haven't had any issues, any of that, so that's it.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner McGiffney, if I may. There is a representative from Public Works who did review the traffic study and the roads. So if you need any questions answered, I'm sure he would be happy to come up and answer.
He's still here, thank you.
And Mike, one more thing, in 2019 was before they expanded and doubled their occupants. So they used to park just to the south too wide, now they park to the north too wide. So, and I'm sure, and rightfully so, any business, I hope they expand, I hope they grow, that's the goal of America, but we still want to be safe and we still want the roads to be adequate for the use.
Thank you. Any other public comments regarding this?
May I?
Please.
Do you have a little history? I'm sorry.
Short history, please.
I'm not old enough to compete with the history lesson we just got, although I am old. So I can understand how someone who's unfamiliar with the situation may think that there are six soccer fields out there. And his proportion that there are is a misunderstanding. As the gentlemen who are with me addressed, those are two regulation-sized fields, and that's what fits on the land. What we have now are six practice fields that are marked with signs on the interior of the fence showing that the two large soccer fields are sectioned off into six practice-sized areas. And they're labeled so that the kids know which field number is which, and those signs are on the inside. The size of our club has not grown since we started practicing at the facility. As a matter of fact, we are smaller, and you can thank COVID for that. So when we started at the facility, we had 36 teams. We now have 31. So our population at the park has not grown over the last however many years we've been out there, as Mr. Horne is asserting. The number of cars that come out to the park are going to be relative to the number of teams that we have. So we actually have fewer people attending now than we did when the park opened. It was out of the graciousness of the Coombs family and their willingness to provide our kids with a safe place to play that we're even able to get everyone into the same facility. Our club has existed since 2009. We rented from every park organization in the city and county that would rent fields to us. Our injury rate for our players was ridiculous because of the unmaintained nature of the fields at the public parks. We had kids breaking their ankles and injuring themselves due to all of the holes, the rattlesnakes and the squirrels that go unabated in our public parks. The Coombs family decided to step up and do something for our soccer community and for our kids. We have around 500 families that participate in our club. We've sent over 200 girls, female athletes to college on partial or full scholarships. Our players have graduated, they're doctors, they're lawyers, they're dentists, they're teachers. We have six girls who've come back from college and are now coaching in our club and are all professionals in our community. So this is bigger than, you know, we're a very low-key organization. All of us have professions, I sell beer for a living and I spend four to six hours of my time every night dedicated to these kids and to their futures and to their love of sport and the tool that soccer can bring to focus a child on education, going, going to college, having goals and aspirations for themselves, and that's what we do. All of our coaches, our college graduates, I have an MBA, numerous of us have advanced degrees. This is our community's service. We're not out here making any money. And when, when the Coombs family decided to give us a second parking area, it was for the safety of the kids. It was so that there weren't as many cars in the same parking area. So that our now lesser number of families that are out there have more room to park, and it's easier so that the kids have more visibility when they're walking out. And the second parking facility that they put in actually has a dividing fence so that that even keeps the balls from going out. So the CUP does nothing but allow the Coombs family to do the improvements that they'd like to do to make the park even more safe for the kids. And that's something, that's a generosity that you don't find very often. So I, you know, regardless of what happens with this, I would, you know, like to go on record thanking them for their support of our kids and of our community and of everything that's good in a family.
Thank you. Commissioners have any comments or questions?
Might I close with a public comment prior to us commenting?
I was thinking we were closed, is there any more public comments? Keep asking, we keep debating. Seeing none, any commissioners have any questions?
Thank you, Chair McGiffney, I would request, since we do have Public Works here, maybe we get some clarification because the concern of traffic was brought up because of the roads, maybe get an understanding of what the conditions of approval on the CUP, what is your take on the quality of the roads, if you would mind, Judge?
Would you like me to state my name? Josh Champlin.
Hi, Josh.
Good evening.
Good to see you, Josh, yes, if you could remind clarifying, it was a comment made that that the two roads intersect on, that there's obviously future improvement for the West Parkway growth, but currently there's improvements required on this and what your take on the conditions are for the CUP.
So when we, when we took a look at this, the applicant's correct, so the lowest standard that has to be met is what we call trip generation analysis, and so, you know, when we're looking at traffic, we're looking at those peak hours of traffic, so 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning and 4:00 to 6:00 at night. Since they're generally operating outside of those hours for the most part, they're not contributing to those peak hours. And so those are the types of traffic that forced improvements like signals and widening of roadways. And so since they didn't rise to that level, then those things weren't, those things weren't required. Neither was a full-blown traffic study. They have to generate what we consider 50 peak hour trips, and their project did not warrant a full traffic study. They did state that the roads can be in disrepair from time to time, and that is on the county to maintain the roadways in a safe, in a safe manner. We have a maintenance program in place with numerous road yards throughout the county. And so we're always looking for, you know, you know, road projects, and they're prioritized based on volumes of traffic too. And so that's kind of how we prioritize the money spent on these roads. The applicant has been asked to dedicate a right-of-way, which they have, you know, agreed to do. The West Beltway is, they had to dedicate quite a bit, I think it's 105 feet of the, of the eastern edge of their property as well as 55 feet along Hagaman. of the eastern edge of their property, as well as 55 feet along Hagaman Road. So we can reserve that, preserve the future circulation element of the Western Rosedale specific plan. So as, as they mentioned, eventually there will be a West Beltway, which is a, it's going to be a freeway alignment that connects down to the, the cross-town freeway that was recently built. And then the ultimate goal is that that's going to be a below-grade road. And so Hagaman is actually going to go over the top. It will be a bridge structure many, many years from now. I hope that answered your question, Mr. Judge.
That does, thank you. I do have one, a last question regarding the roads then. So on a setback you said of 105 feet, with their current, and I missed time, you might clarify this for me too. It was stated that in 2018 that this was approved through a director's hearing for the use, is that my understanding?
So there was actually an agreement through the planning director regarding the use of the site would be minimal and low-impact. The site did grow and so there was more attendees than was allowed for per the letter of the planning director. And so therefore that is why we're here with the conditional use permit. This conditional use permit will supersede that letter. So the applicant must actively pursue activating this permit, which means doing the grading, parking lot, all of the requirements that are listed out in the conditions of approval.
So that 105-foot dedication was not there prior, now it is being dedicated, is that my understanding with this new CUP application?
Yes, so it was, it wasn't there prior and it's, it's a condition of approval on this project. And I'd like to note too, there's, I think there's a couple existing driveways on that alignment. We have asked for vehicular access rights to be dedicated to the county because it is a future expressway. And so to move forward with this conditional use permit, they will not be having, there will be no access allowed off of Rudd Avenue alignment. It'll all come off of Hagaman.
That alignment goes away immediately if the CUP is approved?
The...
Once it's activated, the CUP, that alignment, that access goes away? Is that my understanding?
Yes.
No, that's not the understanding. It wasn't until the West Beltway came through that Rudd was not allowed access.
That's not the conditions, that's not what the conditions of approval say in there. It does say you can use the property for soccer activities up until the time that that road, but it doesn't, but the vehicular access rights have to be dedicated prior to the, prior to the, to be granted for the project. No, not if there, if there's vehicular access rights granted to the county, that means there's no access allowed.
Judge, I apologize, I mean, I know you're speaking, but we, could you, so we could hear what you're saying.
So it's my understanding that in the, in the, in the hearing noticed that the vehicular access rights are a condition of approval for this project, which means that similar to like when, when a track map is done and houses back up against major arterials, collectors, very high-volume roads, we make the, the subdivider dedicate the vehicular access rights so that nobody can come in behind there and punch in a driveway or something. And so it limits access to these really high-speed roads where we, we don't want access. So that was my understanding of what I saw in the staff report.
Can I, can I make a comment real quick for you, just to help you understand? The, the access that we're talking about right now is, is not within the Beltway right now. It is, it is out to the center line of, or it's out to the right-of-way of the Coombs property. So right now, as it sits, until that road comes through, right, because we're just offering a dedication, right? So until the road is developed and comes through, at that time, the county would obtain that property for their use. And at that time, we have agreed that we would not access off of Rudd, that we would access off of Hagaman. But until that time comes, we want the right to be able to still come off of Rudd like we have been and turning into our parking areas at this time. That's, that's what our understanding of the conversation was, is until Rudd is developed, it's only a dedication to somebody. So, so if we finish this and we go out there tomorrow, the county's still not going to have, come out and be able to move that fence out to that right-of-way. It's just a dedication. So once the dedication happens, they have to develop that whole, and they would have to develop that whole entire West Beltway right there, across that property. And I don't see that happening next week, right? Yes. Yeah. So that's where, that's what the understanding that we had was that where everything sits right now is okay. We don't put any solid light towers, we don't put any curb and gutter, we don't put anything out to the right-of-way that currently sits now, so that the county doesn't have to come through there and cut any curb and gutter, remove any light poles or anything like that. So everything is temporary right now where it sits, until the West Beltway comes through. And then at that time, that's when we would not access across there anymore.
Okay. Chairman, can I get clarification from Public Works if that is what is being proposed here? Or is this...
So Public Works has never spoken directly to the applicants on this. So I'm not a land surveyor, I'm the engineer here, so, but it's my understanding that we have two different things. We have irrevocable offer of dedication for the actual roadway and then we have a second, which is the vehicular access rights, typically seen as a one-foot strip. So once the offer of dedication is made to the county, that is county's property to do with what, as we see fit, when we see fit, the need to do it. We have written in the staff report that we've allowed them to use the fields for soccer and keep their fence where it is now. But once the vehicular access rights are dedicated to the county, that, that stops the access. It was our understanding that with the construction of this facility, we saw the access road being built off of Hagaman up to their parking lot. So that was our understanding, was that was going to be the plan for access to the site, not off of Rudd.
Yeah, this is the future right now. If I were to show you that right now, you would see a strip of the Coombs land that's still there. That map of the West Beltway is actually...
Excuse, I apologize. Again, nothing against what you're saying, it just, if you're going to speak, we'd have to have you come to the mic and speak, so we can hear what you're saying.
Okay. The, the West Beltway map that you see right there right now is already mapped by the county. It's, it's an official map. That's, the bearings, distances, widths and everything that you see right there is a recorded map in the county. So what they're asking for is for where the Coombs right-of-way goes to the West Beltway area, which is that 105 feet. They're asking for that portion right now. They're asking them to dedicate that, which they understand that, they know that. But our access is coming off of, off of Rudd right there, is out to a right-of-way that we've had there for years. So all we're doing is coming in off of that south side and off of the north side. Once the Rudd Avenue comes through and they develop that, they're going to put curb gutter, everything through there and we understand that, the fence is moving, all of that. But until that time, we were understanding that we could still access off of Rudd and we would start, as we start our development, because we, nothing's developed right now except for that. So if we don't have access along, or if we can't come in off of Hagaman right there, we have to come in off of Rudd until a point we can actually get the rest of that built.
Okay, appreciate your comments, thank you. To Chairman McGiffney, if any of the commissioners have comments, I would like to get that clarified from Ms. Simon and from Public Works prior to closing this comment, but I'd like to have any other comments anyone has in the meantime, while they're discussing that, or do you have an answer on that, Ms. Simon?
I was just looking for some clarification from Public Works in relation to, there are two conditions of approval. One states that there should be no access to Rudd. Yeah, you can go ahead and read it, Josh.
So this is, I mean, I'm just looking at legally from what's in the conditions versus what's actually going to be in place. Because once, once access is severed, I mean, that's kind of the legal. So it's item five on page six. It says, "Prior to final occupancy approval, the following conditions shall be verified by the building inspector and shall be continuously maintained while this permit is active." And there's two here. One of them is dedicate vehicular access rights along the Rudd Avenue frontage, direct access from the site should not be allowed from Rudd Avenue. So this says, "Prior to final occupancy and continuously through the operation of this permit." And then, but it also says down in number six, "The operation of game fields within the offer of dedication is allowed until such time as the current county Public Works Department deems it necessary to expand Rudd Road and/or Hagaman Road to ultimate configuration, at which time the county will accept the offer of dedication. All improvements within dedication be forfeited." So my interpretation is that that's the operation of the game fields within the offer, but it's not the access off of Rudd. And then what, the, at which time the county will accept the offer of dedication, that refers back to 5A1, which says, "Record an irrevocable offer of dedication to the county for 105 feet." So that's how I'm, that's when I read this today, that's how I interpreted that, those conditions.
Thank you.
And I'll tell you real quick. The, the final occupancy to us was pulling building permits, pulling all of that type of stuff to get this project to where it sits on that, that site map. With the original site map that I had showed everything all the way out to the original right-of-way. And then the staff asked for us to show the West Beltway through there. So if you actually saw the original site map, you would see where the original right-of-way is now and current, and you could see where our access was coming off of there. So this site plan is the ultimate ending story of, of our project here. It's not the way that it sits right now. So that's why we were thinking that the occupancy, which we agree, at the time of occupancy, which means pulling building, building permits, finalizing everything that's on there, is at the time that we would not access from Rudd. So that's the, that is the way that we understand it. Yes. Yeah, the road, the Sutherley Road still has to be built.
Oh, sorry, I apologize. I do agree, that's something that needs to be clarified and I think this is a conversation that Public Works and staff and the applicants should discuss in depth, because that is a very big discrepancy and that could affect your project if they do not want to give you access and how you proceed with this. And I think it's important to get that clarified. So I, if anyone has any other comments, please jump in, but otherwise I think this might be something we should allow to continue on, so they could get some clarification prior to close, making a motion on this to approve or deny.
If I may, I'd suggest we take a five-minute break so that we can discuss this and hopefully finish this tonight.
Also, if we should, any other comments, we should probably discuss those. We'd want to come back again and have another five-minute break.
If, if all we're talking about is the access, I, I think we might be able to work that out in five minutes, hopefully.
The only other item I was going to have clarified is the timing item, only because in the project proposed, it does say 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM and slash or 5:00 PM. So I was just going to make the correction in the motion at some point to say 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturdays. If that was your intention, Ms. Simon? Yes, if you'd like to have that clarification made, we can do that, including Sundays.
Okay. I'll do that later.
The other one I had was, and there may be a reason why it's written this way, but let me see what number. On page seven, we talk about the outdoor lighting, as Mr. Horn referred to, it refers to the dark sky ordinance. We have a 20-foot-above-grade number in item K and 5K and then in six B, we have 30 feet.
Yeah, we can, we can revise that 20 to be 30. They are recommend, they are requesting 30. You can make it 20 or 30, depending on what your commission decides would be applicable.
Thank you, Ms. Simon.
We have a four-minute break. That's right, it went way long. Way long. Need to come to order? Staff, have you come to an agreement on the clarification here?
Uh, yes, we did come to some clarification regarding the access along Rudd Avenue. So, there's, um, let me go ahead and read the, what could be the revised condition for your commission to consider. It would be under 5A6, where it states, "Operation of game fields within the offer of dedication is allowed until such time as the Kern County Public Works Department deems it necessary to expand Rudd Road and/or Hagaman Road to ultimate configuration, at which time the county will accept the offer of dedication and vehicular access along Rudd Avenue." Excuse me, so Rudd Road should actually be changed to Rudd Avenue. So, and I believe that Public Works has discussed that. That would ultimately give the applicant until such time that they have built the site as it would be approved, so that they would be using both Hagaman and Rudd as access until they have the final occupancy for the site. And then, the second condition is the 2C, which could read as follows, Saturday and Sunday, operating hours are from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. I believe that's what the applicant had stated earlier.
That's, that's what I understand, yes.
And so, that, that would be what staff does recommend at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Simon.
I'll make a motion on-
Thank you, please do.
I'll make a motion on staff's recommendation with the updated items as stated by Ms. Simon.
You have a motion?
I'll second.
Call the vote? Thank you, ma'am clerk. Do we have a note for appeal here?
Actually, yes you do. Let me read that for you. This project is, uh, this action is final, and so, an appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department at 2700 M Street, Suite 100, Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms available at the Planning and Natural Resources Department and on the department website. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of the hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. I believe we have one more case, number five. Ms. Simon?
Give me a quick second, sorry. We were not prepared for this to be pulled, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, give me a quick second. I think something happened when I tossed my, uh, water all over the place. I just need to find the staff report for it.
Hey, Rick, are those chairs massagers?
No.
I'm gonna make a motion here, guys.
I did find it. Okay. Okay. This project, good evening commissioners again, and Chair Ben Giffney, this is CUP-18, map 104-30. The applicant is Islamic Shura Council of Bakersfield by Cornerstone Engineering. This conditional use permit is to construct a cemetery with a funeral home and office associated with site improvements located approximately 85 feet south of Kern Canyon Road, and 100, oh, sorry, 1,420 feet west of Vineland Road in unincorporated Bakersfield. Let me pull up a quick aerial. Okay, so this project is approximately 18 combined acres over five parcels, and is in the LMR, which is the low-medium-density residential designated land use by the Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan, and zoned R1 for low-density residential. The site is currently vacant and undeveloped. The areas surrounding the project site consist of mixed jurisdiction of City of Bakersfield and Kern County, and they are vacant undeveloped land with rolling hills. And as you can see to the, let's see, I believe it's the southwest? I'm getting my directions correct. This is Hillcrest Memorial Park, right here. The proposed project is to be built in phases, however, this conditional use permit is to be considered as one entire project. The reason for that is that the applicant is going to be developing the phases through, when financially it is, they are able to. However, when they act, if the project is activated, that would activate the project, and they can develop in the phases of which they speak. The initial phase would be to, uh, to grade the groundwork for the property and to, on a couple of parcels, and then they would also pave the private access easement, which is a 30-foot private access easement that runs from, from here to here, and it would go all the way up to the site and connect to the, to the, uh, to the project. Let me get a site plan here. Phase two would include, uh, the building of an office and a garage for the storage of additional vehicles. There will be, the applicant has indicated there will be no embalming or chemicals of any sort stored on the property or used with the bodies that come to the facility. At the moment, the applicant has a, an agreement with Hillcrest Memorial to use their facility for the office, so that they can meet with clients to discuss the preparations for the plots and how the activities would happen on-site. The, uh, the applicant has indicated that the oversight and auditing of the facility will be conducted by the Islamic Shura Council of Bakersfield, and although the project is a private religious facility, it is, it is exempt from state oversight, although required permits for burials, vector control, fire, and agricultural permits will be obtained. And the applicant does state that complaints against the funeral establishment will be investigated by the Cemetery and Funeral Bureau. And at this time, the applicant is also proposing that, at the time of a purchase of a burial site, a care fee is to be obtained from the purchaser, which is set aside for perpetual care of the facility, in addition to donations that are received for that facility. Staff did receive comments during the comment period from the County Fire Department, Environmental Health Division, and the Flood Plane Management Section, all of which were then submitted to our, for us to consider for conditions, which were included in your packet. Let's see. "We do believe that the conditional use permit does meet with all the basis of approval for the conditional use permit. The compliance with the recommended conditions will limit the hours of public access and adhere to all the applicable development standards." Let's see. The applicant must, I was gonna go through just a quick couple of conditions that they must adhere to. One is paving the private 30-foot access road with a minimum of two inches of asphaltic concrete. The applicant must also gain the approval of an encroachment permit with the California Department of Transportation, as Kern Canyon Road is their jurisdiction. Cemetery hours of operation will be limited between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Staff will be on the property before that, those operating hours, however, they will have everything concluded by 5:00 PM. Cremation and embalming services are not permitted on-site. The project opponent shall provide security measures, including but not limited to the use of security cameras, security guards, monitoring the site after business hours. And the applicant shall also include information regarding the Perpetual Care Fund to the Planning and Natural Resources Department, so that we have that on file. And they must also apply for a vector control program, so that that can control mosquitoes on-site. With that in mind, staff does recommend that your commission approve the conditional use of permit in accordance with the recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings set forth in the draft resolution. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Would the applicant like to speak?
If you don't mind, I would like to let the member of the public that asked to pull up consent speak first, if that's okay.
Okay. Please state your name, spell your name, and for the record.
Good night. Sylvia Bravo. Anne, I, I just have one question before I go ahead and read what I have, is that okay? In regards to the map?
To the map, okay.
Yeah, the entrance, what she's saying, and I'm sure that we've discussed it, and we came to an agreement on what I, the concern that I had. But as far as the entry access to the easement, since it's only gonna be open from five, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, is there gonna be a gate that's gonna close that easement? No. And is that, so that easement is not gonna be paved all the way down, it's only gonna be paved up to your facility?
Up to the entrance.
Okay. So we're the corner lot.
I'm sorry, I would like to clarify something. That private easement must be paved all the way up until it is hitting an encroachment to the road, that they have to also get an encroachment permit with Caltrans.
At the other end?
On the north end. I think she's referring to the south end.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm referring to the entrance on the north end where the cemeteries meet.
The applicant has not provided us any information about doing anything like that.
I believe that's phase three.
So, the, the paved, the paved... Do you wanna put, propose your full question?
Please state your question, so we can move forward here.
Well, that is my question, because we are on the corner lot.
Who's "we"?
I am. I am, on the corner lot. That's our corner lot. It's a private property on the corner lot.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
If you was to see that map, I could show you right where the corner lot is. It's the corner lot that meets the two cemeteries. So, right now, we're sitting next to the current cemetery. The new cemetery is gonna come in next to us.
Okay.
They're gonna open up that easement that we currently have closed right now, and we have it closed because us, me, in the front, and the owners all the way to that easement, all the way to the end of the road at the other end of the street where the other houses are done, and I don't know the name of the streets, I'm not from, you know, I don't live there in that area, but where that easement is at, we've all had problems with transients coming in, trash, everything and anything there. So, we've all, from the bottom of that easement, we've kind of made it to where we've stopped a little bit of the people coming in. We've done things to our properties where we've lifted up the grounds to not allow everybody to come into that easement. So, that was my question, that easement, if it was gonna be open, it's gonna be opened up from Kern Canyon Road, but they're only gonna pave it up to their lot. So, that's what I was asking, I was just asking if it's only gonna be paved to their lot, and I was gonna ask whoever could answer that.
Okay. Well, I thought we were trying to answer a question here, so, we need to answer this question, obviously, if she's asked it, and no one knows the answer to it, that, let's answer the question and then we can finish the comment.
Melissa Snyder with Cornerstone Engineering, representing the applicant of this project. The private road is currently not blocked off by a fence or anything from Kern Canyon Road per topographic survey that we've completed on the site. As part of the development, they will get an encroachment permit to provide additional pavement needed within the Caltrans right-of-way and also pave the private road from Kern Canyon Road down to the south end of the entrance for phase one. She has asked that the east side of the easement have a fence going all the way from the northwest corner of the property to the Caltrans right-of-way, which the developer has agreed to tonight, so that, to try to prevent people from entering her property. That was a private agreement made tonight per her request.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to finish your comments?
Yes. Okay. So, on that note, I just, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to know how that easement was gonna be done, so...
Okay.
If that's clear, then yes, I wanted to remove my consent, my concern with the consent, number five, and then I also wanted to just make sure that I have my 14 days that I can go ahead and appeal the decision if they don't comply to the request in writing that I'm gonna be sending to them.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to comment on this, at this time?
I would just like to add that we are agreeable if council would prefer to add the fence going all the way to the Caltrans right-of-way along the east side of that 30-foot private road, which was her request, so that it's written into the conditions, the applicant would be agreeable to that.
Okay.
If you guys have any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Oh, thank you. Is there someone else who can speak before we do that? Anyone else? Okay. Now, commission, do we have any questions for the applicant?
No questions, I think it would be appropriate to codify that as a condition of approval, so everybody's protected.
Okay.
Take that out of the private agreement realm.
So, Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Chair Ben Giffney. I have a quick question for Ms. Simon. Do you know what, overall, I concur that if we have something that needs to, I've identified, it should be incorporated as a condition of approval that allows staff to be able to follow up, you know, private agreements are not enforceable by staff, so, yes, I want to make sure that if we have something in place, we can get that as a condition of approval. Ms. Simon, off the top of your head, do you know which condition would have to be modified? I wanna make sure, I wanna walk through steps on this.
I believe that would be 4I.
Okay, so, we're just gonna go through this real quick. Melissa, can you look at 4I? Okay, I wanna make sure that everyone's in the same agreement, that we know what condition The condition as it reads right now says the private access road shall be surfaced with a minimum of 2 inches of asphaltic concrete paving constructed over a minimum of 3 inches of compacted base material or material of higher quality. That is what the condition reads concurrently. Or currently.
Can I ask Ms. Simon a question really quick? I think it might be more efficient to revise condition 7G.
Could you please speak to the microphone, so we understand you?
Yes, I apologize. Ms. Simon, would it be better to revise condition 7G, since that's the condition that is discussing the fence?
It depends on if we wanna connect the paving, and I'm fine with either one, to be honest with you. I thought we were connecting with the paving of the access road, so, that's neither here nor there to me, to be honest. I'm fine with that too, Craig. Do you have Mr. Murphy?
Okay, let me ask a question. Ms. Simon, do you have language to say how that would be modified, that we can read into the record right now?
I would need a couple minutes. I think the question also is, how far out to the road are we, is the fence to go?
It would be our request to the Cal, to the southern Caltrans right-of-way, existing southern Caltrans right-of-way. That way, we don't have to add any additional fence into the right-of-way. Caltrans won't allow that.
We could say to be built out to the Caltrans right-of-way and expanded within, with the phases of development. For 7G.
So, if I'm just going through, I'm looking at these condition. Condition G right now specifies fencing around the perimeter of the site. So, it specifies that the facility will require a 6-foot-high wrought iron fence along the perimeter of the project site to be built, out, and expanded with phases of development. So, my question, Melissa, is, where are we extending that fence then?
In addition, the chain-link fence shall extend from the most westerly northwest corner of the property to the southern Caltrans right-of-way along the east boundary of the 30-foot private access road easement.
Okay.
She's not gonna read through that.
This is a strange, to make sure everyone's clear, can you, I need you to, staff, I need to, it needs to be shown on a map, like, I need, we need to know what we're talking about here, because we've had a lot of discussion. We could put an aerial, you can use the, you can use the, yes. Okay, so, the overall question I have to you, Melissa first, and I do believe, before we go through, commission, we ask our, everyone involved. So, the question is, or the item is, you would like that wrought iron fence to be extended from the northwest corner north until you get to the Kern River Road, Caltrans boundary? That is the short of what the request was, what you agreed to, and everything along those lines?
Yes.
Okay, my second question is to our commenter, and I apologize, I missed your name.
Sylvia.
Sylvia, I asked the same question to you, because again, you guys had a discussion. She showed this on the map, we wanna extend a wrought iron fence from that corner to the connection of the road, is that what you believe that you had a discussion with as well?
Yes, however, he did say chain-link, I just wanna make sure, 'cause he keeps on telling letting her know that it's a chain-link fence...
Okay.
...that they're gonna do. I am good with whatever they're gonna put in, as long as it protects our property and it keeps me from going out there and cleaning it every three months.
I got it, okay. So, now that we all know what we're talking about, I do believe that condition G, 7G, is the condition that we should identify. I think we leave it as it is. The proposed facility shall require a minimum 6-foot-high wrought iron fence along the perimeter of the project site to be built out and expanded with phases of development. I think we need to add additional language that specifies, in addition, a 6-foot-high chain-link fence shall be constructed from the northwest corner of the project site, extending northerly until you get to the Kern Canyon Road right-of-way.
Correct.
That would be the recommendation and revised condition for condition 7G.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Make a motion for that.
Can I ask something else really quick? I, so, I'm not a builder, this is my first time in front of anybody like this, I'm gonna ask my questions. When we were, when I was talking to Ms. Simon, she, I came out on the 29th, I sat out there, the meeting was canceled, we were fine. I just have a three-hour drive to go back home right now. So, as I sat out there, I questioned everybody that walked in, are you with this project? Are you with this project? Trying to come to a meeting with somebody, so that I wouldn't have to be here again. I asked, they were notified that there was no meeting on the 29th, we weren't. Ms. Simon said you weren't notified because you weren't a party to the case. What is this gonna, is, what is the protocol? Am I never gonna be notified if something else happens in this area? Do I get notified?
So, to answer your question, Sylvia, if you provide, Ms. Simon, your contact information in terms of mailing address or anything along those lines, any notice that ever goes out, you'll be provided to you.
Okay.
Additionally, we reached out to anybody that we knew, because that meeting was gonna be canceled, that we had phone numbers for. Unfortunately, we did not have a phone number. If we had known, if we had received a letter from you during the processing of this project that had your number, we absolutely would have reached out and said, we don't believe we're having a quorum, the meeting is gonna be canceled, things along those lines.
Well, she has my information now.
Okay, so, now, we will put in the file that if anything ever gets proposed to be changed, modified regarding a new hearing, you'll get a hearing notice.
Thank you.
Regarding your additional question as to the continue or the appeal or whatever, we are recommending this be modified. The recommendations, if the commission adopts it, you know, they're codified, codified in this requirement, and so, as staff reviews their building permits and what they submit, they couldn't operate until they construct the fence as being required, assuming the commission recommends that. So, I believe that with this condition, your concerns will have been met.
So, and then another question on that now, since I have you. The fence that goes on their property, on my property, that fence that divides my little corner there, is that wrought iron or is that chain-link?
The way the condition reads right now, it's all wrought iron. The only thing that is chain-link would be that blue marker that we've identified on this, on this map.
Okay, now, another thing that I'm gonna ask, is that while they're constructing this, and they have this area opened, and people do come out and dump, is this another agreement that we're gonna have to do on our own, that they're gonna have to keep this clean from being dumped on, because they're opening up the road to the access?
So, I guess my only answer is, this applicant can only control things that are on their property, you know, items that are on someone else's property or not off their site, technically, you know, that's not something that they have oversight or anything along those lines.
Okay, but they're gonna put the fence in before they build out the easement?
It's part of all the construction, everything that goes forward.
Okay, so, that should prevent them, as long as they don't touch my little hill that I've made right now to prevent people from driving up there.
Yes. And the fact, you know, you have our, who this applicant is right now, I'm sure if you touch base with them, they'll have construction people out there.
Well, they're helping out, I'm trying to sell the lot to them, they don't wanna buy it, my number's up there.
If someone has some illegal dumping, one, you can always contact co-compliance. You have Ms. Simon's contact information.
Me and Abel are friends, we talk every three months.
But again, they have people out there too as well that are keeping, you know, they're required to keep their site clean and everything.
Okay.
I absolutely believe that we will be able to help address, and I think that this will help make your concern, your situation better than worse.
I think, we're from Somas, we have like an area out there, all the neighbors come together, and we all like talk to each other, that's why I was kind of, my phone number's on that lot, they should've called me and said, hey, this is what's going on, but they don't wanna buy the lot.
Yeah, and while I'm just talking here, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you for participating. We absolutely want your comments, and I know this was long, and I do thank you.
Thank you, have a good night, drive safe.
Thank you, Sylvia.
If there are no other questions. No other questions or comments, I would make a motion to approve with the amended condition 7G.
I will have a second. For eyes one absent, motion carries.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, this is a CUP as well, so I just wanna read that it is subject to appeal. For projects where the commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of the appeal. That appeal can be filed at the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100, Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms that we have available at the department and on our website. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of the hearing. If no appeal is received, the action of the commission is final.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Do we have any other comments? Hearing none, I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
So moved, motion, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.